Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting, the City Council of the City of Lakewood, Colorado on January 14th, 2019, in council chambers at 7:00 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul.
Here.
Johnson. Vincent.
Here.
Bita.
Here.
Branks.
Here.
Royball.
Here.
Gutwine.
Here.
Skilling.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
LaBure.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, well, thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everybody who's taken time out of their evening to come and join us, as well as those who may be watching on Channel 8 or checking us out online. I ask that if you do have a cellphone, please put it on silent, and if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, please be seated. All right, will the clerk please read item four?
Item four, presentation, Jeffco Public Health, Executive Director, Dr. Mark Johnson.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Johnson. Welcome. You have a quick community update for us. We always appreciate you taking the time to come out and visit with us.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Dr. Mark Johnson. I am the Executive Director of Jefferson County Public Health, and honorably, that includes being the Public Health Director of Lakewood. I'm here to close the loop on an item that came up last year in the fall. You may remember hearing about ethylene oxide and the Taruma BCT site, which is on Collins Avenue between Quail and Sims in Ward 1 of Lakewood. Taruma BCT was never out of compliance with the law, but what happened was the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, in some of its reviews, decided that ethylene oxide was a bit more concerning than they had had in the past, and so they lowered their limits for the emission of ethylene oxide, which then put more concern about what was going on at Taruma BCT. Because of that concern, in August, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment did testing, and in the handout that I have given to you in this folder, if you look at the small document on page five, you will see where the testing was done. Some of the testing was done to the west of the Taruma BCT site, some of the testing was done to the east of Taruma. As you may know, the wind direction typically blows from the west to the east. If you will look on page six, you will also see that they did some background testing in areas far distant from the site, so that they would have a background level to see if there was ethylene oxide in the environment. And then the most important page is on page seven, where you can see the test results of the testing that they did. The tests to the left of the line, five, one, and two, were on site on the sites that were to the west of the site, and three, four, six, seven, and eight were those on the east side of the facility. The blue graph was what we call pre-control. These were the initial tests that were done. The orange line shows what was the, what were the results after some emission controls were tightened down at the site, and as you can see, there was a great decrease in the amount of ethylene oxide post-control compared to pre-control. The two highest tests on site two and three were those that were actually on the site of Taruma BCT facility. If you then turn to the next page, page eight, you can see what the risk associated with ethylene oxide was assessed to be. And although it might seem unusual, the risk of sites two and three was actually lower than the risk on the other sites, because the risk to workers who are only there for part of the day is lower than for those who live in the community who are there all day long. The blue lines are the risk pre-control, pre-emission control, and the orange are post-control. And as you can see, after the emission controls were put in place, most of those came down within, very close to what is background in the Denver metropolitan area. All of this does not tell us exactly what the, the risk of cancer is in the area, but I do want to report that by looking at the cancer registry, there is no increased rates of cancer in this area, either to the east or to the west of the site, and the estimated risk of cancer to anyone living within 1,000 feet of the facility is 0.15% risk for people developing a cancer that is related to ethylene oxide. That is a very low number, and it actually is much lower than the lifetime risk for somebody who is living anywhere else in the country. For non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, the risk in the US is 2.1%, and for breast cancer, it's 12.4%. So what I am here basically to do is to tell you that after there were concerns that were raised about ethylene oxide in the neighborhood, we worked closely, both with Taruma BCT, which was very cooperative. We worked with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to get the testing and get the, the results from that testing to see what the concerns might be in the area. I, I can say that at this time, it appears that they are not of a high level of concern, and that we will continue to work with Taruma BCT. They actually have reported that since their emissions control, they have actually done more work, which, which they believe will lower it even more, and will be very close to the background levels in the metropolitan area. I know I had talked to some of you about this last in the, back in the fall. I wanted to just close the loop on that and let you know that something had been done, and that we feel very good about the, the position that we are in now, as far as this concern is. Happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure how much time I have left.
Sure. Well, certainly if there's questions. I'd just like to, to thank you, your office, and actually, I'd also like to thank Taruma. You were out ahead of this and tried to be proactive, engaging the community, and what I've learned is this isn't unique. We were contacted by a mayor in Illinois, whose community is also dealing with a similar issue, so appreciate that. And is there any questions from council? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. This isn't really a question. Counselor Abel and myself attended a meeting at Taruma when this first became very public, and I too was extremely impressed with Taruma, the way that they approached this, their openness, their transparency, their willingness to work with both Charlie and myself and the neighborhood. So I'm pleased to hear your results. Thank you.
Counselor Gutwine?
Thank you also for presenting this information. Where could the community get access to this booklet or the additional information about the testing results?
I'm not sure how I can leave this maybe with your clerk, but on the back page of this, there are four websites that have more information, both from the State Health Department, also talking about what ethylene oxide is used for in a number of things. So these websites would be the best place, although they can also call the State Health Department. I'm sure they'd be happy to get copies for them.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Clerk, please read item five.
Excuse me. Item five, Resolution 2019-1, Appointing the Mayor Pro Tem of the City Council of the City of Lakewood.
Okay. I'll now open up the floor for nominations. Mayor Pro Tem Royball.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor Pro Tem, I understand what it takes to, to be a Mayor Pro Tem, to stand side by side with the mayor and continue moving forward and working together for the betterment of this city. We need somebody that has the wisdom and the experience and the knowledge to help us do that here in this, on this council, and I am proud here to nominate Charlie Abel for that position. I think he, he would fit the bill just perfect.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. We have a motion, a second, and discussion. Counselor Bita?
I was gonna go ahead and second it, and I agree with Counselor, oh, I'm sorry. I agree with Counselor Royball.
There we go. I think Counsel Abel has shown he's got the maturity and, and the judgment and the, and the humor to, to take on this responsibility, so I would second the nomination.
All right. A motion, a second. Any other comments? Please cast your votes. That passes 11 ayes, zero nays. Congratulations.
It was surprisingly painless.
We're gonna save it for later, sir. There's a lot of people here, so. So, item six. Please read item six in.
Item six, Presentation, Residential Growth Initiative Petition.
Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Forgive my failing voice. This is on the agenda for presentation of the, what's been called the Growth Initiative or Strategic Growth Initiative, citizen-initiated ordinance that was brought to the city clerk quite a while ago, we'll just leave it at that, and was approved for presentation to the city council up until a time when a protest was filed challenging the validity of that petition. The code, city code has two references that indicate that when there is a protest filed to an initiated ordinance, there is to be no action taken to move it forward to its adoption. So upon the filing of that protest, the process of presenting the ordinance was, was suspended. We've been in court since then. It's taken multiple orders from the court after multiple hearings, and some excellent work by our outside attorney, Mark Ruskin. But just last week, the court issued an order in, in the city's favor on the remaining claims in the case. Therefore, with the protests ostensibly resolved at that time, it was the obligation of the clerk to schedule the presentation of the ordinance. The code provides that the clerk presents it, and the council has a couple of options, either to adopt it verbatim as an ordinance, or to refer it to the voters at an upcoming election. That's why that item is on your agenda tonight, for that action. Late this afternoon, the attorney representing the protester filed a notice of appeal in the Colorado Court of Appeals. In it, that's, it was a timely filing pursuant to appellate rules, and by virtue of that appeal, that notice of appeal having been filed, the rules are still in place in the code that preclude any action towards an election or towards adoption of that ordinance while the appeal is pending. So we're back in court ostensibly for as long as is necessary to resolve the issues, and at this moment, the code precludes the council from taking any action, and therefore, in our opinion, precludes the clerk from going through the exercise of presenting it for council action. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So, and I know there'll, there'll be another topic geared towards this later on this evening for further discussion, kind of somewhat around this under general business. What I would say is I think there is still more information potentially that you're working on, and you'll get that to council, and we'll continue with any questions. Okay. All right. So I'm gonna move to public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the council agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all in attendance observe the decorum of the city council chambers and refrain from applause or audible support or discord with the speaker. There is a three-minute time limit. This little black box right here will go green for two and a half, yellow for 30 seconds, and then red, and I'll politely try to wrap you up. I will read those names from the public comment roster and ask that you line up on both sides of the room in the aisles near the podium. If you have not signed up to speak, please stop by the clerk's desk to sign the roster. This will help us with our record-keeping, but get your contact information so that we can get back to you if you have an answer or a question. Please note, in order to keep our meetings from running too late or too early into the morning, I will ask those of you who wish to agree with a certain speaker, rather than coming to the podium and repeating what was already said, perhaps you'll be kind enough to stand at the appropriate time when your name is called in support. I will be sure to take account of those in favor and those opposed, and that will count in the public record. So, public comment will be for things that are not on the consent agenda. There'll be a second opportunity there, and this will not be for the two actions before us, ordinance 2018-20-22, which is campaign finance. That will have its own public hearing, as well as ordinance 2018-21, which is the rezoning case. That will also have its own public hearing with its separate lineup. So first up, we have a special group joining us this evening from Dunston Middle School, and so I'd like to invite you down. This is your chance, and they are gonna pool their time, so they have nine minutes. And if you wanna talk at this microphone, right here? Okay. And if you wanna also just tell us your name and grade, that'd be great. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Ally Harris. I'm a seventh grader at Dunston Middle School. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about the Lakewood Sustainability Plan. In Ms. Hoffa's Sustainability Class, we learned about what Lakewood is doing to help our environment. We also read through all the chapters in the Sustainability Plan and learned what we, as kids of this community, can do to make our environment more sustainable. As we know, we have goals in the plan that we must work towards to keep our environment healthy. Lately, we've gotten off track and fallen behind in our progress to meet these goals. It is important that we take care of the environment and stay focused on what's ahead of us. We need to keep working towards our goals and always stay on track. One specific goal that we are not on target to meet by 2025 is to reduce citywide building energy use intensity by 20%. In the most recent progress snapshot, our megawatt hour usage has increased from the baseline. We should look to Carmody Rec Center as an example of a building that has been successful in reducing its building energy intensity. As mentioned on page 13 of the Lakewood Sustainability Plan for Kids, we went to Carmody Rec Center to see in person what steps they're taking to reduce their building energy intensity. They have taken a unique approach to how their building functions. For example, Carmody uses a machine that takes air from outside and uses it to heat and cool the building. They also use LED lights. These lights are better than the ones they had before. They don't contain dangerous chemicals, and they save energy and last longer. The rec center also installed three vents that absorb all of the humid air from the pool area to keep it cooled down. Lastly, they have improved the cleaning system for their pool by installing new pipes and filtration systems. Because of these changes, Carmody Rec Center has become a more resource-efficient building. If other businesses start thinking about what they can do to help the environment, it becomes a cycle, and before you know it, most of the buildings across Lakewood will be reducing their building energy intensity. This also has to do with Chapter 3 in the Lakewood Sustainability Plan, Sustainable Economy, which consists of a strong, connected local business community. This is why it is so important that we stay on track and meet our goals. Thank you again for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Wayland Leaks. I'm a seventh grader at Dunston Middle School. I've lived in Lakewood for almost my whole life. It's been an awesome place to live, and it's everything I could have ever dreamed it would be. My experience with, think about your experience with Lakewood, how you've grown up here, everything you've seen here. Think about the next generation that, that'll have to have the resource, that won't have the resources that we will, because we have been wasting them. Think about the streams and the parks and the trails and everything else. Is it fair for the gener, next generation of kids to live here with depleted resources, for them to have to deal with the mess that we have created? That's not fair to them. They shouldn't have to clean up our mess. So we have to think about how we can make Lakewood a better city for them to grow up in. The Sustainability Plan is amazing places to start with, growing towards making our city a better for the future generations. Last semester, I was in Ms. Hoffa's Sustainability Class, and I learned so much. We learned about all the chapters in the Sustainability Plan, why they are so important, and what we can do to make Lakewood a more sustainable city. Like how when we were writing Chapter 2, we went on a field trip to Carmody Rec Center. While we were there, we learned about what they're doing there to cut down on energy costs and improve energy efficiency. We learned that they had switched out of all, all the light bulbs in their gym to LED lights to save money and energy. During this field trip, we also got to learn a bit about how the public transportation works. We rode the RTD bus to and from the Carmody Rec Center. When we were, we did this, it was really, it really put a picture in our minds on why people, why it's so important to get people to use public transportation. It's really important, because if we can get a ton of people to, to ride a bus, it's better than having a lot of cars on the road. It'll all, it'll also reduce emissions, save money, and clear up traffic. Towards the end of the semester, we heard from the City of Lakewood that we are falling behind in our sustainability goals. When I heard that, it was even thought of that the city was gonna cut back on the Sustainability Plans, I was baffled. I thought that anything that should, if anything, they should be increasing the number of people working on the plan. The goals that we are falling behind, behind on include reducing Lakewood's water usage by 20%, by 2025. The water usage went up by 2%, and the goal status is listed as not on track. This is one of the many goals in the plan that have been deemed unattainable. They, just because something isn't working perfectly doesn't mean you should give up on it. Imagine if Lakewood's government decides that they're gonna stop efforts on the Sustainability Plan. Then we would just be discarding all the progress we have made. We would have to start anew again. In the end, it is up to Lakewood's government, but I thought I would have made my case on why we should continue working on the plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Welcome. If you wanna pull that mic down.
Hi, my name is Patrick Davis, and I'm a sixth grader at Dunston Middle School. One of our biggest issues in today's world is sustainability. Sustainability is important because we don't use it properly. Problems such as pollution and climate change will be increasingly harmful to human life as we know it. That is why the City of Lakewood and the public alike need to show their concern and take action before it's too late. Just how concerning is sustainability? I could go on for hours about all the things that we need to prevent, but for time issues, I will make it quick. For one, the global temperature has risen by almost 2 degrees Fahrenheit since 1880, and the past few years were some of the warmest on record. 2 degrees may not sound like very much, but this is causing arctic sea ice to dip to very low levels, record low levels, in some years, and sea levels have risen by eight inches, causing some high tides to be problematic for low-lying cities and towns, and of course, it's only gonna get worse in the future if we don't stop this. Pollution is also a major issue. In the Pacific, there's a garbage patch twice the size of Texas, causing severe problems for marine life and the area, and that's just to name a few major issues. The good news, there are ways we can stop this. Us here at Lakewood haven't been doing a very good job at it, though. According to the latest progress update for the City of Lakewood Sustainability Plan, we aren't on track to meet our goals by the designated time or we stats in most of the categories. These reasons are why the City of Lakewood should step in and try very, very hard to not only meet the goals, but be a worldwide leader that tries as hard as possible to reverse the situation we are in. Today is my birthday. I am 12 years old today, and I want to have Lakewood to remain a fantastic place to live for the rest of my life and beyond. Thank you for your time.
Well done. Well done. We normally don't clap in chambers, but for your birthday, we are clapping.
That's a tough one to follow, right? But you're gonna do great. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Sophia Quigley. I'm a sixth grader attending Dunston Middle School. I'm here to talk to you about the importance of a Sustainability Plan here in Lakewood. We are also fortunate to live in such a beautiful community. However, we have an immense responsibility as citizens to keep it that way. For us to do that, we have to work together as a team and stay organized. A way we could keep organized is our amazing City of Lakewood Sustainability Plan. Even kids can help, thanks to students at Dunston Middle School, who have created a City of Lakewood Sustainability Plan for kids. Our plan has kept our community happy, healthy, and safe. If people don't continue focusing on our plan, there could be a negative impact. It sounds crazy, but it's possible that Lakewood could become, blah, blah, blah. Sorry, I'm sorry, could become an unsustainable community. In unsustainable communities, there's a higher rate of unemployment, poverty, and crime rates. Not only do we want that for our community, but we don't want it for people around us that we care about. Maybe some people even want it for the world. We believe that people want to change the world in a good way somehow. Why don't we do that for ourselves and other people around us? With our plan, we can make our community a better place. It helps us really understand that we are so, so very It helps us really understand that we are so, so very fortunate to live here. While it tells us how our actions can dramatically affect us. Thank you very much for your time.
Well done. You just expired on your time too, so. That was fantastic. Thank you so much. And I'm going to break just real quick from protocol, but Ms. Hoffa and Principal Kirksey, thank you so much and to all your staff. These kids have been working really hard on taking our adopted Sustainability Plan and getting ready to implement it for their fellow peers throughout Jefferson County, hopefully. So we're going to give you all a round of applause. Thank you so much for coming out. Now you're welcome to stay for the rest of the night, but it's not going to be this fun. I can probably assure you. All right. So we'll keep going down the roster. I'll, I'll name a few names off. And just so you know who's coming up next, I have Good Business Company, Brad and Nick. Oh, and Marie, there you are, all, all of you. Good evening. And then Mr. Mace, you're next.
Thank you so much, all of you, for your, your service and your diligent commitment to the public good. My name is Marie Venner. I've been in Colorado since 1970, going on 50 years now. And I'm a long, longtime business owner as well, as well as a founding member of Good Business Colorado. I'm an expert in public policy, best practice, and cost benefit analysis. Making sustainability and achievement of our clean energy goals a top priority of the City Council in 2019 is one of the best investments Lakewood can make. The economy nationally, internationally, and in Colorado are already shifting. We can choose to be responsible, accountable, and future oriented, or we can be done for and potentially out of office. We, I come from an agricultural family on one side, and so I'm especially attentive to the risks that we are, we are developing at this point for another Dust Bowl in Colorado that would be a long-term, near-permanent situation. So I don't think we want to be responsible for bringing that about. Young people, faith communities, and business leaders demand action and we can do it. The technology is here. The models and best practices exist, but we need to have courage and follow through, the willingness to make big steps, not baby steps, in the most consequential areas like the clean energy transition. At the beginning of this evening, we said the Pledge of Allegiance, which many of us grew up saying regularly. Liberty and justice for all includes our kids and future generations. We can do it. Thanks.
Thank you. So I have Mr. Mace, and then I have Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Backer, Ms. Kellogg, Mr. Olson, Eeks, Mary Jane. Are you after Mr. Olson? Okay. And then Mr. Ash. Well, good evening. So you must be Brad or Nick.
Yeah, I'm Nick. Sorry, I'm still feeling a little bit sick. I am a student at Bear Creek High School. I am 17 years old and I have lived in Colorado my entire life. I am also a plaintiff on the federal Art Children's Trust case. I would like to thank the council for creating such an awesome sustainability plan. It's truly, it's truly like a wonderful marvel that we've had a council that could create such a great plan. However, I feel like it's kind of sad that when we were able to create such a good plan, but we haven't been able to implement it and we haven't given it the resources that I think it truly needs. Part of the thing is, part of the thing is, is that it does, it does a lot to say that we're going to do a lot of good things is that, and you should be truly commended for that, but it doesn't really mean anything if you aren't able, is that if you aren't meeting those goals and stuff. And I feel like it's really important to emphasize that children and youth especially have to deal with the impacts of climate change more than adults. And, and is that, and it's kind of easy to dismiss and say, well, maybe we, maybe we do have other more important things to worry about, but I, I feel like the city of Lakewood has a lot of power, especially considering like the public utilities and all of the remaining things with that. But anyway, I just want to think is that it's really important to just give the Sustainability Plan all the resources it needs. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And then Brad, and Brad, you're signed up twice. Okay. All right. Thank you, we'll take you off the list. Mr. Mace, come on down, sir.
Good morning, council members. I'm here because I have a major concern and I have an update for you. One of the, I'm going to go with the update first. The update that I have is I spoke to the construction crew that's working on the new apartments right by Lamar Station Apartments. The serious problem that I have with that is they told me that it's going to be a year before those apartments are done. Does council know anything about this? And if they do, what is the time limit the council was given on this? And then the other piece that I have is lighting by Lamar Station. Again, I've come up here several times asking council to do something about this. We are doing, somebody's going to get hit out there. Cause you can't see five feet in front of you at Lamar Station. There's lights at Lamar Station, but the lighting is terrible. I have asked time and time again of what's going to happen with this, and I have not got a one response. So Mayor, I would really appreciate it if you would have somebody get back to me on this. Thank you.
Ten-four. Thank you, sir. Make sure staff knows which one you're talking about as far as the complex, please.
I can do that.
All right. Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Backer, and do I have Debbie, Debbie, oh, there you are. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name is Debbie Gail Mitchell. I am a resident of Ward One, Lakewood, Colorado 80215. And I just also wanted to thank you all. I know that you guys do really important work and I really appreciate the work that you do. I am here because I, I, I'm very excited to hear all the talk about sustainability. I also am very committed to sustainability. My family, we're a one-car family and we rely on walking and biking to school every day. And I live near Oak and 20th and we walk along 20th between Oak and Nelson. My son goes to Fatima, my daughter goes to Vivian Elementary School. And currently there is a bike lane, but there's no sidewalk along 20th. And there's two concerns that I have. One, the fact that there's no sidewalk, it makes it very hazardous for, this is a picture of my son walking on 20th just on Friday. I can pass that along if any of you guys would like to see it. One is that there's no sidewalk. The other concern is that people just blow down 20th. I think that there needs to be some type of regulation of that speed limit. One, I don't even think, I think 30 is too high. There's a school and a public library right in this area. And people are blowing through this, through this area. And I think the speed limit should be lowered to 25. I also think a sidewalk should be implemented. And I think that there should be, I think a way that you could raise revenue for the sidewalk would be to ticket individuals who are not following the speed limit. I know in Denver, they have a lot of vans that they set up that, that will take your picture and send you a bill in the mail. I think that that'd be a prime spot for that. My main concern is the safety of the kids. There's about 250 kids that go to Fatima, many of them that are walking and biking to school, and it's not safe. So I really appreciate your time and I will be following up with an email to all of you with more pictures if any of you are interested.
That's great. That'll be helpful. So we have your contact info as well. Mr. Backer, good evening. And then I have Ms. Kellogg, Mr. Olson, and Mary Jane Paulson. All right. And then Mr. Ash, wherever you are. Good evening.
As you said, excuse me, yes, Dick Backer, Lakewood resident since 1972. Bit of a background, 20 years in the homebuilding business. This is not regarding the growth initiative. During that period of time, the company I was with built about six small to medium-sized projects in Lakewood, sometimes rezoning or annexing them into Lakewood. I've been out of the business for about 10 years, right when they crashed. But I'm certainly not a no-growth person. Specifically, what I am very concerned about is what's about to happen on the southeast corner of Old Kipling and Jewel. That is the last project the company I was with completed. We bought five or six acres, rezoned it, built 45 nice, if I might say so, condominium units on that corner. We were required to leave an acre directly on the corner for commercial, probably retail office. The residents that bought that, and I feel obligated, it's probably, probably the wrong word, but I'm concerned for them, that, that is now shortly going to become 43 units. We built 45 on the four or five acres. One acre is about to have 43. The way that's being accomplished is going three stories high, lessening the setbacks to both Kipling and Jewel. I'm concerned the ice, with the three-story building, I'm concerned the ice is going to melt along Jewel. Closing a direct access drive from the community out to the light on the corner. That's going to force all the residents in that community that are going west or south to turn, to go out of the community, go left across Jewel, or drive through the existing condominiums that are there to get to the light on their private streets. In addition, while it's a very, very nice design, it bears no resemblance to anything for miles. It'd be a great look in Belmar at a light rail station. The worst part about it though is probably the parking, which is one space plus three or four in total for handicapped or visitors. There's both one, two, and three-bedroom units in there and three bedrooms and one car, the parking is not going to work. All the projects we built, and we built several multifamily projects, always had at least two plus a significant number of guest parking. I understand that affordable, this would be for rent, that affordable or subsidized don't have to post notices in the land or notify neighbors or nearby HOAs, this is going to be a big surprise to them. They're going to be parking on Jewel Place, the public street to the south, in the Danish bakery across at the church. Please just reconsider.
Thank you. Ms. Kellogg? Good evening, welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name is Nancy Kellogg. I do not live in Lakewood, but I was invited to attend and I am, I strongly encourage your Sustainability Plan to go forward, take additional steps. The Zero Energy Ready Homes Program is a Department of Energy program that is, is, is excellent, that may be helpful in achieving your goals. And I just want to say I'm in support of all efforts that you can make to increase the sustainability of your community. I work for SWEAP Southwest Energy Efficiency Project and we would be happy to help you in any way we can. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Charlie and Mary Jane?
I pass, Mary Jane pass. We'll be back another night with a shorter agenda.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you both, actually. It's very kind. And Mr. Olson, we're getting close to parking, sir, so hopefully he'll come back soon and we'll be talking about parking. Mr. Ash?
I'm going to pass also, I was going to talk to you about Strategic Growth Initiative, but we couldn't have taken enough tonight, I'll save you two minutes.
Okay. Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Poston? And then I have Michael, Michael DeRozia, Barbara Mills, Elizabeth, Carrie, Michael, Ron. I think we all know what we're all here for. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name is Joan Poston. And I wanted to first do some discussion about transparency tonight. When I went to lakewood.org and I hit events, it says there are two events today and it doesn't mention the City Council. So today's events were the study session and the monthly officers' meeting, the workshop and then officers' meeting. In order to see the City Council, you have to go to the week events. And I just wanted to point out, this is not clear and not very transparent and not easy. So the other thing that I wanted to address is this. I was once a child in Lakewood. And when I was 17 years old, I went to Wheat Ridge High School. And we had concerns about the environment. Went across the street to this big marsh and did a study on it. Eventually, that big marsh became a park. It's no longer a marsh, it's Crown Hill Cemetery Park. And I wanted to say that when I was at Wheat Ridge High School, there was some people saying that things would be dire when I was this age and that there would be no energy left, that we would use all the energy by 2020. And I don't know if you've seen gas lately, but that's not true. And I was at a bee club, actually a bee group this weekend. And while we were discussing bees, we were discussing how many bee hives we should permit on each person's land. And it became a very interesting discussion in sustainability, sustainability of bees and how much seeds and how much pollen that we should have and whether we should allow them to be two hives instead of one. There are all sorts of opinions on what sustainability is. There is all sorts of opinions on what affordable housing is. And I would like to say now that maybe when you're looking at your sustainability plan, that you need to understand that it's not all that dire. I'm still here, I'm still happy, and I'm still looking for my flying car. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael? Then Barbara, Elizabeth, Carrie, Michael, Ron?
Good evening. My name is Michael DeRozia, I live in Ward Four. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. As you head into your retreat on January 26th to determine the priorities for the City of Lakewood in 2019, put sustainability at the top of that list. I ask this for many reasons, but mainly I ask this for the future generations that come after us. Treat the earth well. It was not given to you by your parents. It was loaned to you by our children. We do not inherit the earth from our ancestors. We borrow it from our children. The last time I spoke about sustainability and our need to address climate change, I told a story about my military service during the Persian Gulf War. It was about walking across the Kuwaiti desert while the oil fields were burning. This was a defining moment in my life and the lives of many men and women that day that were serving in the military. And now I have a mission to save the planet. The Pentagon recognizes the threat of climate change. Nearly 50% of all the US military installations across the globe face increased or increasing risk of a slew of climate risk of a slew of climate change-related threats, including extreme temperature, flooding, and drought, according to the Pentagon, documented. From the EPA, what climate change means for Colorado? Colorado's climate is changing. Most of the state has warmed one or two degrees Fahrenheit, we learned that from our Dunston middle schoolers tonight. Throughout the western United States, heat waves are becoming more common, snow is melting earlier in the spring, and less water flows through the Colorado River. Rising temperatures and the recent droughts in the region have killed many trees by drying out soils, increasing the risk of forest fires, or enabling outbreaks of forest insects. In the coming decades, the changing climate is likely to decrease water availability and agriculture yields in Colorado, and further increase the risk of wildfires. We have the ability to change the future for the better. We have the technology, we have the knowledge, the economics makes sense. Do we have the will?
Thank you. Barbara, good evening, welcome.
I actually have a prop. I'm going to...
Okay, we can turn on the overhead?
Well, I would like to pass it down.
Oh, sure.
And I'm definitely cutting my remarks short, so...
Well, thank you.
My name is Barb Millsbury, I live in Ward Four, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I, again, am going to encourage you to put sustainability at the top of your priorities when you go into your retreat on the 26th. I was going to talk about economic development, blah, 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 et cetera, but we all know that sustainability best practices generate savings for residents and businesses, and I wanted to point to a couple of examples. Just going to briefly recommend that we replace streetlights with LEDs, that could save us a lot of money. One city reported saving $300,000. What I'm passing down to you is, comes out of a recycling program. Mary Gilkison and I have worked with these Dunston kids that were just here earlier, and we've found that there's a product that you can use stuff from the recycling to provide new sources of materials for construction, manufacturing, processing industries, and create jobs. So through our sustainable neighborhood, we began this lunchroom recycling effort, and worked with Dunston in the Green Mountain Articulation Area. A company from Iowa that is producing this wallboard that I'm passing down is now relocating to Colorado. So they make this wallboard, it replaces plywood, so that means that you don't have to have the formaldehyde that's in plywood, you don't have to have all the water that's used to make plywood. Instead, this is made out of milk cartons and hot beverage containers. So it reduces waste from our landfill, and it produces something that is a valuable building material. And now, it's been used for 10 to 15 years, now it's going to be produced by a Colorado company. These are the kinds of businesses that we need to promote in our city, and we have to look to the future so that we attract people here because of our sustainability. We can think outside the box and partner for the, find new partners for the 21st century with opportunities like this. So I really am encouraged you to focus on sustainability this next year. Thank you.
Thank you. No bad words.
Thanks for the reminder. Good evening, Mayor Paul and city council members. I'm Elizabeth Molinar, and I'm a resident of Ward One, and as you may know, I'm anthropologist, I work at the Colorado School of Mines and Regis University. And tonight, I also want to take the opportunity to urge you to make sustainability your top priority at your retreat. Simply, sustainability means the avoidance of the depletion of natural resources. President H.W. Bush already mentioned in 1988, and I quote, "Our land, water, and soil support a remarkable range of human activities, but they can take only so much, and we must remember to treat them not as a given, but as a gift," end of quote, end quote. These issues know no ideology, no political boundaries, it's not a liberal or conservative thing we're talking about, end of quote. Quite a few Coloradans are very concerned about access to and conservation of water. I like to point out that energy and water systems are interconnected. Energy is required to extract, treat, and deliver water. On the other hand, water is used in multiple phases of energy production and electricity generation, from hydraulic fracturing and irrigating crops for biofuels, to providing cooling water for thermoelectric power plants. Saving energy saves water. Most energy efficiency programs are also inherently water efficiency programs. For instance, Excel's energy efficiency kits contain low-flow sink and showerheads, which simultaneously reduce both the need for water, and also for gas or electricity to heat up the water. Being sustainable is a little bit like being frugal, and making sure you have some savings. We teach our children to put money in a piggy bank. We plan our finances so we have some money for calamities or big purchases, and for retirement and/or for our children. We use cautionary proverbs, like not to throw money out of the window, or a penny saved is a penny earned. We should be equally prudent with our natural resources. Moreover, being sustainable has more advantage than saving our natural resources. Particularly, a commitment to using clean energy aids to keep dollars in our local economy, saves money for homeowners, creates employment, and improves public health and the vitality of the community. It also generates a certain level of local independence. And finally, strains on our natural resources affect vulnerable populations disproportionately. By being sustainable, we also protect the people that are most vulnerable. I want to ask you to make sustainability a top priority for 2019, and make sure Lakewood can reach its goals. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Carrie? And then, Michael? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, city council members. My name's Carrie Sonniborn, I live in Ward One in the Iber neighborhood, and have been active in the Sustainable Neighborhoods program since its inception. Like my colleagues, I'm here to ask that you make sustainability of Lakewood a priority in 29, by, 2019, by charting a course for the implementation of the city's sustainability plan. We do not want to end up all talk and no action, or be criticized, as Denver has been, for having no plan for putting in place its sustainability goals. The city can build on the enthusiasm and participation of citizens who are already taking part in the Sustainable Neighborhoods program, which has involved over 1,000 residents who have executed dozens of creative programs. More and more citizens are aware of the sustainability plan and concerned about the lack of progress at the city level. Meanwhile, citizens are ramping up action on the ground. For example, I attended, just this past Saturday, the first Green Team Accelerator Lab, which aims to link people up according to shared green interests, and to create rapid local action. The city can also take rapid action, but it must act now to raise the priority of sustainability in 2019 and beyond. Implementing this sustainability plan has no downsides that I can think of, and can only make Lakewood a better and more attractive place to live. This has concrete advantages such as boosting real estate values. So, once again, please make implementing the sustainability plan a council priority in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael? And then Ron, and then, last name Simmons, I don't know if it's Mark, Philip, and Lauren, and then Carolyn, Charles, Norton, Dennis, and John Henderson. Good evening.
My best to be brief. Respected city leaders, the last time I appeared before this body, I came as a member from, a member of the community concerned about the future of the sustainability program in our city. I spoke about the value of being a leader as a community, and remaining forward-thinking, especially in terms of attracting and developing businesses in this rapidly developing field. Today, I come to you as a stakeholder in this community who interacts with the local business community. One of the courses I teach at Mines, is, I'm a professor at Mines, is a senior design course for chemical engineers. And this year, we offered the students the opportunity to complete a project in conjunction with local businesses. I contacted local alums, colleagues, and research organizations for proposals, and was able to offer four different project choices. One on drinking water from Northern Colorado, one on pharma from Aurora, one on a startup idea from a physics professor, and one from energy, one on energy from NREL, the National Renewable Energy Lab, Wright and Golden. To make a long story short, these projects were much more popular among the students than the ones myself and my colleagues proposed, of course. They love to work with local businesses and research organizations, but, and I just sorted over 150 chemical engineering seniors into their senior design projects. And would you believe that of these four externally-supported projects, NREL was the least popular? Now, you might suggest that the students might have thought the NREL project would be hard, and while you're right, I can assure you that my students at Mines have never shied away from such a challenge. And while I haven't polled all of my students, it was clear to me after speaking with a few individuals about the project choices, that the students were less interested in this project because of the lack of employment opportunities in renewable energy in Colorado and around, and surrounding. There are simply no jobs in this field here. Now, as I consider where I can look for partners in the local communities as I develop future projects for my students, I'm disappointed at the thought that the only rapidly growing industries in the area might be marijuana-related. Don't get me wrong, I'm quite sure this industry will employ many of my students as well, and there's plenty of money in it, but can't we agree that it's at least as laudable a goal to see Lakewood become a leader in sustainable energy? I urge you to make sustainability a priority during this and future retreats. Such a Lakewood becomes such a leader, and attracts investment and growth, at least business growth, to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ron.
Greetings, Mayor Paul and councilors. My name is Ron Horseman, I live in Ward Five. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to comment on this very important topic for Lakewood. Sustainability is one that is near and dear to us, but I'm going to cut my comments a little bit short because the kids said a lot, and I can't follow up, it's hard to follow behind what they did. But the four areas that I want to hit on are, number one, dollar savings. First of all, when you do sustainability, the actions that need to be taken to reach the sustainability goals all save dollars for homeowners and businesses alike. Sustainability activities include a variety of measures, and everyone in the community can participate at some level. The list of available actions includes everything from conservation and efficiency measures to renewable energy systems. The second one is economic impacts, and I've talked about economic impacts before. The economic impacts on Lakewood from sustainable activities touch all sectors of the city. Most of the dollars residents and businesses spend on energy normally leave the local economy. So every dollar saved in Lakewood will stimulate the local economy. Additionally, economists have found that these dollars roll over seven times before leaving the economy. This is called the multiplier effect, and from my past experience, it's very real. Jobs is the third one I wanted to talk about. Sustainability activate, actually creates jobs, and I have here what's called the virtuous circle of employment, and I can leave this for you to look at. In fact, let me pass it around. Sustainable jobs can go on to change the life of entire communities, and on a larger scale, underpin social cohesion across countries and regions. This makes investment in sustainable job creation a cost-effective way to deliver long-term positive development impact. And the last one that I want to talk about was, is achievable. Lakewood Sustainability Plan goals are very achievable. The technologies exist to make achieving all these goals possible, we only need to allocate the resources necessary to get the job done. I encourage all you members to make achieving Lakewood Sustainability Goals one of your top priorities at your upcoming meeting. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Simmons? Is it Mark?
It is Mark.
Hey, there we go.
Thanks for your time tonight, I'm Mark Simmons. I've been living in Colorado about 56 years. I spent a few years on the barbaric east coast, and then got back out to Colorado. I'm CEO of Energy Experts, we're national developers of solar projects that include specific energy efficiency equipment. Our combined technologies approach is different than the solar companies, and yields superior economics. The team is located in Denver and in Washington DC, we're the energy consultants for the US Catholic Climate Covenant. They're actually doing what the Pope said about the environment. So we have lots of Catholic projects all over the country. And because of that, we have numerous investor groups that are interested in financing our projects. So we manage projects anywhere from Maine to Florida to Hawaii. But I live here, and I care about Colorado more than anyplace else. I've been involved in about 1,000 projects in Colorado so far. So our investors are interested in signing a 20-year agreement with cities, because they like the credit risk of a city, as opposed to any other entity. And, you know, it's a reduced credit risk. And so we're rolling out a new program in Colorado that involves signing up cities for the program to massively reduce carbon emissions. And the way it works is this, the committee sits, commits to the project after, of course, you see all the details. With our help, the city announces to all the homeowners they can sign up with the city, submit a deposit, and get solar installed on their home, just with a deposit. It includes some energy efficiency equipment, thereby, again, making the economics better than just solar. We've already got an excellent solar contractor in Colorado that's committed to very low prices, it's about 30% lower than the typical price of a solar system here. The investors pay all the costs, and they'll own the system for the 20-year period. The homeowners will still have a meter from Excel Energy, but they will pay the city for the solar production. The homeowners will save a percentage off what they would have paid Excel Energy. Any further energy they need, of course, electricity, they'll buy from the regular meter, so that's always there. And the city keeps a margin, and then pays the investors each month, so the city makes a margin on that. We believe this will work out to a 15% to 20% discount for the homeowners, and a 15% to 20% margin for the city without having to raise taxes. If Lakewood signed up 1,000 homes for this program, we're talking about reduced carbon emissions by nearly 17 million pounds a year, 37 pounds of nitrous oxide, and 49,000 pounds of sulfur dioxide, which causes acid rain. This is a practical method for the city to reduce carbon on a large scale, save money for homeowners, and gain income for the city, and it really propels Lakewood Sustainability Plan forward. As a side note, my wife and I, who live in Denver, have three solar systems on our home, so all our heating, hot water, almost all our heating, all of our hot water, and all of our electricity is powered by solar, including two electric cars. So for the next 50 years, we have free power. And I've got a program document with you, with me, and I'll sit it here in case anybody wants it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So I have Philip, Lauren, Carolyn, Charles, Dennis, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Brown, and then Ms. Kendler. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to support two linked goals that could be discussed at your retreat. One, that Lakewood becomes a leading green city for promoting clean energy and other green practices. Two, that the city develops as a leading center of the clean energy industry, based on the world-class research, human resources that are here, and innovation assets in the area. My name is Philip McCready, I'm a resident in Lakewood, and I've worked here, run economic consulting business here. And for the last 20 years, I've been involved in innovation R&amp;D for companies like RWE Energy, which is Europe's largest diversified energy company. And right now, I've actually also done research for the city of Lakewood, and right now, I am working for Campbell County, Wyoming, which is America's largest coal producer, and there we're working on a blueprint for diversifying their economy over a 20-year period to find alternative uses for coal. So apart from well-paying jobs, clean energy and other sustainable solutions benefit local quality of life, which contributes to the city's bottom line. However, this kind of echoes an earlier point. West Denver really has the assets to go much further and become a place that attracts startups and innovators, to develop some of the solutions needed for a sustainable future of wind and solar infrastructure, batteries, electric vehicles. All these technologies need vast amounts of mined and recycled resources. Rapidly scaling up the development of renewable energy is going to be a massive challenge, and too little attention is paid to the minerals that will be needed to build these technologies. So from battery storage systems at grid scale, to solar panels and what have you. The current system for extracting these minerals is not always efficient or even sustainable, and many new technologies are needed in the mineral exploration space to actually deliver on the clean energy future that people have been talking about. So what does that mean for Lakewood and West Denver? So creating strategic partnerships of organizations like Colorado School of Mines, Red Rocks College, National Renewable Energy Laboratory, and the Federal Center that I've had discussions with members of their board. There's, that, along with the clean tech and mining companies that are here, offers an incredible resource to really start to build collaborations. an incredible resource to really start to build collaborations and partnerships. Seeking to attract pioneering enterprises using that resource is a real, okay, is a real piece to that. And so essentially, I'd advocate that these economic potential is explored further and that your leadership would be hugely beneficial. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and Council. I'm Lauren Meion, resident of Ward One. You know, I do have a little bit of a background thinking through these issues with undergraduate in finance and an MBA from UW Madison and 12 years of work as a business development in various corporations and consultancies. And now I, you know, I've decided to run a small business entity, and I've relocated it to Lakewood this year. So I'd like to sum up the overwhelming business and economic development case we've presented to you over the last year, hoping to prioritize the implementation of our city's sustainability plan. Through the code upgrade process, you heard how better construction saves $500 to $1,000 off energy bill for each year, for each homeowner. There are significant ongoing savings for Lakewoodians with local economic multipliers pointed out multiple times. During the code upgrade, you received a presentation from Moni Newton, who drove from Pittkin County to explain the ramp and core programs she implements, which help their residents of all walks implement further energy savings. These are concrete working programs. Tonight, you heard Mark Simmons with Energy Expert USA, offering his renewable energy and energy efficiency program, which reduces energy bills in the order of 20% for participants and generates additional revenues in the order of 20% for the town. This highlights the concrete economic opportunity in moving towards clean energy. You heard from Phil McCready, a PhD in economics, previously working for our town's EcoDivo Group. Dr. McCready explained how clean energy and sustainability are perhaps our most stellar EcoDivo opportunity, increasing our gravitational force to attract new business to Lakewood. You've heard about the connection between water and energy, which evolve together. Water and energy conservation are both parts of our sustainability plan. The initiative to cap growth is back, showing similar concerns regarding the impacts of growth. You've received the annual report from our sustainability department, showing the deficiencies and how we're lagging far behind on our self-adopted goals and sustainability plan. And we have shown you how similar Colorado towns with similar goals are investing far more into their sustainability teams and programs. Finally, you have witnessed the interest of so many residents of Lakewood in public and private comments, from environmental and health and religious motivations, to economic and business support, to the hundreds or thousands of Lakewoodians who volunteer their time and effort in the sustainability neighborhood programs and beyond because they viewed us as a strategic priority. With all these facets in mind, we're asking you to put the implementation of the plan and the most consequential clean energy goals in there on your priority list during your upcoming council retreat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome.
I do appreciate that there was an appeal today, but I would still like to speak on the sustain, or the plan that was discussed earlier. For over a decade, I worked as a teacher of the deaf. One requirement for me was to write a yearly individualized education plan for every student I worked with. I would work for about 14 hours on each plan. This time was imperative so that all who had an interest in the student were able to give their input. As a citizen of Lakewood, I think it is reasonable for me to ask that the same attention to detail is given to any plan that city council creates. I reviewed both growth documents that have been proposed. The first plan I reviewed was the Lakewood Moving Together Plan. I was impressed by a number of things in that document. The first was the time that city council took with the number of stakeholders to create the report. I was also impressed that action steps included timelines, who in the city and in the business community would be involved in making decisions as well. I appreciate that this document holds both the city of Lakewood and the business community it was working with as partners in making decisions to make sure that our city grows in a thoughtful way. I have concerns with the Lakewood Strategic Growth Plan. First, it does not look to me, and I'm sure to many other business in the business community, that time was taken to think about many issues that would arise as this plan would be implemented. It seems to me that many parts of this plan, particularly how exactly with 40 minutes, 40 units or more would be approved, would be implemented in an inconsistent manner. If I were a businessperson, I would have concerns as to how I would be able to work with the city of Lakewood to build my business. The next concern I have is the wording of the few of the sections. The first is the section where exceptions to this plan would be made in areas of blighted communities. This provision disgusts me. There's no other way to put it. To me, it's an obvious attempt to make sure that all the best growth is kept out of blighted areas and that these blighted areas are left to deal with the difficulties that might be created by building multi-unit homes. I also have concern with your 1% idea and how this number creates a solid plan for growth. I would like to know where this 1% number comes from. My last concern has to do with the idea that this growth will lead to crime and decay in our community. I see different causes for crime in our area. Crime occurs in no small part because there are people in Lakewood who don't have their physical, mental health needs, as well as their needs to live and grow and have families in a warm, safe environment met. My hope is that the city council puts more thought into ensuring these needs are met. And I would just like to wrap up by saying that I am strongly against the Strategic Growth Plan, and I hope that you go back to the plan that was already created and work off of that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Charles Norton. I'm a private attorney from Denver. I represent the Big Sky Metropolitan District, Number One. I don't know if it's directly pertinent, but I should note for you, I'm not a resident of Lakewood. I have lived in Colorado for 64 years, immediate successor to my grandfather, who arrived here after World War I, following the armistice in 1918. I have the privilege of representing Big Sky. Our understanding is that you are being requested, in some form and according to some process, to reconsider or to examine an opinion letter which has been issued by your attorney, Mr. Cox, to the effect that the intergovernmental agreement that was entered into between the Green Mountain Water and Sanitation District earlier this year and Big Sky Metropolitan District, Number One, Mr. Cox's opinion was that this intergovernmental agreement was in compliance with the service plan of the Big Sky District, which was approved by this council in 2014. Our understanding is that you will be asked somehow to revisit, to reexamine, to function in a manner that's contrary to Mr. Cox's opinion. Obviously, Big Sky is in agreement with Mr. Cox's analysis, and whatever process is the pleasure of council, however it is that you folks want to take this up and consider it, we want to be available to answer your questions. We want to be available to participate as Big Sky Metropolitan District and to hopefully facilitate an orderly process that allows Big Sky and Green Mountain to go forward with the agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi. My name is Dennis Jones. I'm a green building engineer. I live in downtown Valmar. And I too urge you to make, keep sustainability as number-one priority, and I'd also like to see some, maybe some proactive programs that will get you to, get you past those goals, get you, get you out there, and hopefully you can consider those. I think one area of, on your sustainability plan that I thought was lacking was the subject of solar access. And when I'm talking about solar access, I'm talking about new construction messing up the solar access for other properties. And I think I found nothing in the Lakewood, in searching Lakewood city documents on solar access. Maybe you have, but anyway, I think it's something that needs a little further consideration.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Henderson, Mr. Brown, Ms. Kentner, Mr. Furman, and then a tough one for me, so we'll wait for a minute. I can't read it. I'll try to decipher it here. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and Happy New Year. I wanted to tie into the sustainability. We've heard a lot about that this evening, and you have an opportunity with this sustainability issue to apply public leadership, leadership of public officials accountable to the public. And yet another sustainability issue I submit is what about sewer to Rooney Valley? You heard briefly from Mr. Norton, and I concur with him in one point, and we disagree very strongly in another. First of all, where we agree is we need to have a public hearing with participation by all of the, by all of the interested parties in order to fully exercise and educate and inform this council so they can make a informed decision on behalf of the public and exercise, again, that leadership. Second, and we, I have submitted written materials, they have submitted written materials, and we look forward to submitting more. With respect to the issue that we disagree with, and that is Mr. Cox's report, I respectfully submit that that report does not support their position, and I'm looking forward to responding to that, hopefully by this weekend. And we'll submit to you a written response and analysis. At the end of the day, there's a right way to do this, and there's a wrong way to do this. I respectfully submit that the path that we've taken, that they have taken so far, is the wrong way. There is a right way, and I think together, we can do it the right way. A way that will be accountable to the public, will serve the property interests, and serve the future for this community. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brown, Ms. Kentner, Mr. Furman, it looks like Chuck is the one I couldn't read, and then Matt.
Good evening, councilors. Good evening. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time this evening. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments with regards to a few things. One of them including sustainability, and I'll get to that in just a few moments. The primary task at hand for me is to discuss briefly the service plan, the IGA between Big Sky Metro and Green Tree Metro District and Green Mountain Metro District. I said that a little inaccurately, excuse me. I think between Big Sky and Green Mountain includes the Green Tree Metro District. A service plan approved is not open-ended. That doesn't mean the service plan is submitted, reviewed, approved, and then the utility, be it a metro district or a special district, is just under their own authority to expand and provide service. Each time they want to expand their service area, it needs to go back in for a new approval for the service plan. That didn't happen in this case. I also have to question if the inclusion of the Green Tree Metro District properties, this is the intersection of 470 and Alameda Parkway, were contemplated since the onset, then why was it just entered into and brought onto the plan, the IGA, a year ago? Not even a year ago? That just doesn't add up. Pardon me, I wanted to introduce myself a little bit. Some of you folks know who I am. Not everybody does. I'm a co-founder of Save Dinosaur Ridge, Dinosaur Ridge Neighbors, but also graduate of the Graduate School of Public Affairs at the University of Colorado Denver. I've worked in city government. I currently work in state government for most of a decade. I work with partners across all jurisdictions. In my current role, not so much at the local level, but I have a very clear understanding of how government works at all levels, whether it's the local level or the national level. When we get up to the international level, I'm a little fuzzy, so pardon me. Luckily, that's not what's at issue here. In regards to the Big Sky IGA and sustainability that we opened the meeting up with earlier, I would ask you guys, councilors, men and women, excuse me, to support the decision of Green Mountain Water and Sanitation District. You know, Colorado is a home rule state. In my experience, the larger governing body frequently, if not almost all the time, gives a nod to the lesser sort of jurisdiction, if you will. You know, if a county, I'm getting into the weeds a little bit, but I would just ask you to honor the decision that Green Mountain Water and Sand has made for themselves, based on their expertise as a utility provider and the rate payer's best interest, and support them as best you can. I start talking about sustainability because I've recently learned, and my background all sorts involves environmental policy and management. Am I out? Okay. Thank you for your time. It's great seeing you all again.
Ms. Kentner, Mr. Furman, is that accurate? Chuck? Is there Chuck here? 2514 South something. You're up. Come on, let's go. You're up. I'm just looking for the person who's up after you. Good evening.
Good evening, council. The right to appeal does not take away our constitutional right to direct democracy, except, it would seem, in Lakewood, Colorado. I thought I would be discussing this issue, placement of the Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative on the ballot, with you over a year ago. Instead, it was withheld from its rightful place on the ballot by a district court case that a judge ruled nearly three weeks ago, not just last week, has no merit. Because of that, the community's right to vote on an issue that weighs heavily in this community was thwarted and delayed for nearly 18 months. And now, once again, this initiative, which could have been presented to you at a special meeting last Monday, is being delayed, a direct result of the influence wielded by the development community and their influence on some elected officials. As co-petitioner, representing the thousands of registered voters who signed petitions supporting the Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative, I urge you to do now what should have been done over a year ago. What Judge Diego Hunt noted was never done. Expedite this process. Direct your attorney to do what is necessary to put this to a vote of the people. The people you should represent, the people of Lakewood. The Strategic Growth Initiative is a direct result of our years-long effort to persuade city government to mitigate the surprisingly unexpected consequences of our zoning ordinance, unintended though they may have been. The Denver Post is in the midst of a, quote, "concrete metropolis trilogy," detailing the effects of too much growth that sprang from a park-like environment. Of particular note is that this trend of paving over our nature, quote, "could lead to potentially overwhelming increases in stormwater runoff and is causing worsening heat wave impacts and likely hurting residents' physical and mental health." Other Post articles reference gentrification and the detrimental effects on affordable housing caused by too many high-density luxury apartment buildings. But the, excuse me, but the Strategic Growth Initiative requires affordable housing. It is inclusive in that it limits the effects of unfettered gentrification. It preserves green spaces, and it is sustainable environmentally and economically. And the Strategic Growth Initiative returns to city council the decisions they should be making, but chose instead to duck the issues and place such decisions with an administrative employee. But again, in case you didn't hear me the first time, as representative of this petition, I urge you to direct your attorney to do whatever is necessary to put this initiative on the ballot expeditiously, so the members of our community can express their vision of the city's future. So our community's constitutional right to direct democracy is protected. The right to appeal--
Time is up, ma'am.
--is not-- Please stop interrupting me.
Time is up. Everybody has three minutes.
The right to appeal--
You're out of order.
The right to appeal...
You're out of order.
...does not take away our constitutional right to initiative, except, it would be...
I'm going to adjourn this meeting right now at 8:26 PM.
And other representatives of groups are usually given extra time.
Ma'am, you know the process. If you wanted extra time, you certainly would have been granted that. Everybody else follows the rules. So we're going to break until 8:30.
Five, four, three, two, one.
All right, I'd like to reconvene the Lakewood City Council meeting, January 14th, at 8:33, and we'll continue with public comment. Mr. Furman, and I imagine I don't need to reiterate the rules of public comment. Welcome.
Yeah, actually, I'll be brief. I'll cut my comments down to just a couple things, because it's not all that relevant now that the appeal has come in. The main thing I wanted to say is my concern when and if the SGI ever comes back to you is while it has a noble intent, I think it is ripe with the possibility for graft and at the very least lobbying, because if you have an individual who, say, has influence over six of you, that individual could market their ability to influence you, since you have the ability to vote on 40-plus unit projects. And that alone is the sort of scariest piece of the whole thing, because it takes something from being an open system that we all know the rules of into a system that is capricious and, like you said, maybe not guaranteed graft, but certainly ripe for it, and certainly there will be lobbying that everyone seems to want to avoid, so.
Great.
That's the key component.
Thank you. So the next up was the address I can't read, or I can read 2514 South. Is that person still here? Chuck Arnett, last name with an A, something. All right. Matt Armio? Matt Armio? Okay. Lynn Judson? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, city council. Thank you, mayor. Lynn Judson, Lakewood, 80228. I want to ask for your reconsideration of the IGA that was signed on election night in 2018, last year in May. And the reason, the two primary reasons that I want you to relook at that is that I think there are great material changes in it, in what it proposes to do. It proposes to expand sewer systems by eightfold, which was pointed out by one of our residents who did an analysis that night. It also, of course, extends the boundaries. So for those two reasons, and it extends them out of the Lakewood area, and it changes the purposes of the IGA. How much more, I mean, it's very different than the first IGA from 2014. You need to consider the new one that was proposed on election night and has substantial material changes, boundary changes, and purposes. So I think you need to consider it as a new document, not as a continuation of the service plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So that exhausts the roster. Anybody else wish to speak? And if you didn't sign up, if you just stopped by Ms. Greer's desk, she will gladly sign you in. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And we didn't catch you in the beginning, but we do have a special guest with us. We have a Boy Scout, and if he'd like to introduce himself, that'd be fantastic. Just tell us your name and what school.
Hello. My name is Aaron Bucis. I am a Star Scout with my troop chartered at Our Lady of Fatima Parish, and I am actually homeschooled. I'm here to, for the Communications Merit Badge, to complete one of the requirements there, so thank you for having me.
What is a Star Scout?
It is the third closest to Eagle, so it's Star, then Life, and then Eagle Scout. I just have a couple of merit badges. Communications is one for Life Scout, and then I'll be working on my Eagle project, so.
Appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hodson, your report.
Yes, thank you. I have several updates covering all kinds of topics. First of all, as you know, the Link Pool will be closed starting tomorrow for maintenance, so those from Ward 3 and in the area just know that, the pool will be closed. Also, Washington Heights will be undergoing significant renovation, and that begins February 1. And we're anticipating that to take about 60 days, so there will be an interruption in service at Washington Heights as well. A couple of interesting notes. We are anxiously awaiting our Christmas sales tax receipts, and when we have that information, we'll certainly pass that along to see how much shopping people did over the holidays in our fair city. Something very significant in our police department, we are about finally to implement the Niche Records Management System, which is a regional system. This is in the police department. We're going to start the training in February, and this is a much more modern way to hold our records as it relates to public safety. It'll be more seamless and much easier for our agents who are on the streets. We're anxious about that. We've been working on that with our partners, the other agencies in the county. We've been working on that, it feels like, for years, and it's finally happening. So we'll be having a whole host of training sessions with all of the employees in our police department. We are working hard on finishing our 50th anniversary events, and you'll see those happening. This is that special year, so it's going to be a fun year of events and really cool things that this team is working on. And along those lines, we're working on Year Two for the Big Boom Bash. It'll happen sometime, I think, early July, thinking around the 4th. I'm kidding, it is the 4th. So I had a really interesting couple of experiences. Last week, on Monday, I was a part of the interview panel for the Jeffcom Deputy Director position, and we interviewed people from, oh, several states and came down to some really qualified candidates. So I'm anxious to see who they select, and I feel strongly that we'll be in good hands with the top three. Any of those would have been, is, one of them is going to be very good, whoever they select. And finally, on Friday, I was a part of the interview panel for the CML Executive Director. As you know, Sam Mamet is leaving, and we had some really qualified candidates as well, and I spent a good chunk of the day interviewing those folks. I was lucky to be on that interview team. Couple of other updates as it relates to projects happening in the city. This one seems especially pertinent today. I wanted to talk about an update on our Energy Performance Project, and I think the children, the students at Dunston have already addressed this, and let me give you a little more detail. You know that we entered into a contract with McKinstry and the Governor's Energy Office, and we've completed the Energy Performance Contracting Project. Lakewood, as you know, has adopted a targeted 20% increase in energy efficiency across our municipal facilities in the Sustainability Plan, and this project helps to meet those goals. So here specifically, to give a little more detail about what the students were so excited about, at Carmody Recreation Center, that includes a new pool boiler, a new pool makeup air unit, new LED underwater pool, and facility lighting underwater and in the facility, and water fixture improvement for water conservation. There were also upgrades at Green Mountain Recreation Center, the Clement Center, Public Safety Center, Civic Center North and South. And together, annually, the facility improvements will save, so get this, in electrical, 1.1 million kilowatts; in natural gas, 51,211 therms; 1.4 million gallons of water; and a reduction of 906 metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions, that's, of course, the carbon footprint. Our annual utility cost savings is $126,966. So that's exciting, and we're, although we haven't met our goals, as you've heard, and we're getting, at least we're taking steps thereof. And I thought this was interesting. Did you know our golf division is on pace for the highest revenue ever? We're about $46,800 ahead, ahead of any other year. So we've got some golfers out there, which is good, because the golf courses look beautiful, and that's such a nice way to spend an afternoon if you're bored. And we have this pretty cool program that I'm sure a lot of you have seen. This is the distracted driving educational program. Have you seen that? I just thought this was really interesting. We had a crossover meeting with our division managers, and Witt talked about these signs that are posted all over the city, and I think they're interesting. Here's what they say. One says, "One in four crashes caused by phone use." Another one says, "Texting and driving, a grave mistake." Another one says, "Texting will wreck your day." Another one says, "Texting, 24 times more likely to crash." And finally, "Text takers are accident makers." I mean, the whole idea, obviously, is just to increase the education. It's so easy to say, oh, let me just respond to this text, and it really is dangerous. In Lakewood, one in five collisions, which amounts to, we're estimating, 927 in 2016, were attributed to driver distraction. You know, when you have a distracted driver and then you have distracted pedestrians who are also on their phones, that's a pretty dangerous situation. So an alert driver is more likely to avoid a distracted pedestrian. You know, it's all about, get off your phones, right? So, especially when you're driving. I hope, we've seen some pretty good response from these signs that have been posted, and we're hoping that people really take heed. Finally, you're going to hear more about the Family Justice Center. That's on the schedule, I believe, next week with, or the week after, with Chief McCaskey talking about the Family Justice Center. We're also going to have District Attorney Pete Weir here to talk about this really important program. It's been renamed as Porchlight, and it includes about 70 partner agencies who are going to work together at this one center, under one roof, to provide services for survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, elder, child, and at-risk adult abuse, and human trafficking in Jefferson and Gilpin Counties. This is going to be a really significant program and a really significant facility for our residents, and we're looking forward to it. And already, Porchlight has raised over $300,000 from donors to get this started. This is a facility where, when somebody's really in trouble and needs those services, they can find those under one roof. I can't do it justice, but when our district attorney and our police chief are here, they'll give you more detail, and I think it's really an honor that Lakewood will be housing that facility. Along with, along the lines of employee recognition, our own Detective Paul Geiger, was named the 2018 School Resource Officer of the Year by Jeffco Public Schools. Congratulations, Paul. I just know him as Paul, and he's over at Lakewood High School, and he is a heck of a guy. So congratulations to Paul. And finally, Lakewood added over 2,000 jobs in 2018. So how's that for a hodgepodge of information? And finally, something to look forward to. I wanted to remind you that there's a city council annual planning session on the 26th, but I think you've heard that a few times tonight. Please be there. It starts at 7:30. We'll have food at 7:30. The meeting itself starts promptly at 8:00, and we're hoping to be, to conclude by 4:30 or 5:00, so it'll be a really fun, action-packed day for all of us. And quickly, to highlight the agenda, the upcoming... And quickly, to highlight the agenda, the upcoming agenda, again, we're going to have an update on the Family Justice Center, which is also Porchlight. That's on the 28th. The Second Reading Ordinance on the Non-Cigarette Tobacco Retailer's License that has gotten a lot of attention, a lot of interest, that's also on the 28th. And we are going to have a presentation by our own James Mace, also on the 28th, talking about disability awareness training. And he's been working with Mary Ruther to put that presentation together, and it's going to be interesting, and I'm really excited. And it takes a lot of courage to come to this podium and to give a presentation. So, that'll, that's precious, that he cares so much about training the rest of us. And then on the Fourth, we're going to have a presentation on bike and scooter rental fleets. That'll be fun. And also, waste haulers. So, a lot to look forward to, a lot happening here in Lakewood. And with that, my report concludes.
Well done. Thank you very much. So, we're going to head to our Consent Agenda. And actually, on our internal notes, we show 8:45 a.m. when we're going to roll into that. So, we're right on time. PM, I mean. Well done. "The use of the Consent Agenda has been made to expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the dates set tonight by City Council. Any council member may request an item on the Consent Agenda. Be removed for separate discussion under General Business." Will the Clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
The Consent Agenda consists of Items Nine through Twelve inclusive. Item Nine, Resolution 2019-2, Designating the Public Place for Posting Notices of Public Meetings During 2019 Pursuant to CRS 24-6-402. Item Ten, Ordinance O2019-1, Adding a New Chapter 5.06 to the Lakewood Municipal Code Concerning the Licensing of Retailers That Sale Non-Cigarette Tobacco Products. Item Eleven, Approving the Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of December 10th, 2018. And Item Twelve, Accepting the Minutes of the Lakewood Advisory Commission Executive Committee Meeting of November 7th, and the Lakewood Planning Commission Meeting Minutes, October 3rd, both 2018.
Great, thank you. I will now open the public hearing on Item Nine, Resolution 2019-2. Nobody's indicated a wish to speak. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and ask for a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of council minutes and the acceptance of the minutes of boards and commissions. Order all ordinances introduced in the first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing set forth, the date included in the ordinance, and for the adoption of resolution, all of which are included in the Consent Agenda items introduced into record by the city clerk.
I second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. And the Consent Agenda passes 11 ayes, zero nays. Will the Clerk please read Item 13?
Item 13, Ordinance O2018-22, Repealing and Replacing Chapter 2.54 of the Lakewood Municipal Code Concerning Campaign and Political Finance in Municipal Elections.
All right. So, we've had a study session, and of course, a first reading. And this came through an ad hoc committee chaired by Counselor Abel. And our guidance was from our, one of our attorneys, Mr. Gruiskin. I'm going to turn it over to you to discuss any changes that were highlighted, and if there's any questions from council.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The ordinance, as you'd indicated, has actually gone through a fairly significant level of consideration and review. The ad hoc committee spent a large amount of time on it, and then the study session resulted in some productive comments. It is an extensive ordinance, and I know that there were some additional comments submitted to you from the public on December 9th. Not exactly sure what would be most helpful to the council, given the review that's already been done. But obviously, the purpose here is to maximize disclosure to the Clerk and give the Clerk and citizens a meaningful remedy where there is a lack of disclosure, to increase disclaimers so that voters know exactly where ads and other political materials are coming from, and to make the campaign finance limits more appropriately reflect the needs of the city of Lakewood and its citizens.
So, I'm going to open the public hearing on this, and same rules apply to public, as public comment, three minutes, two and a half green, half minute yellow. Right, I'll politely ask you to wrap up. Jean Leach, you signed up. You favor the question and wish to speak. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the City Council and fellow Lakewood residents. My name is Jean Leach, and I'm here as a new homeowner in Lakewood, Ward Three, and even though I've been a resident here for a number of years. Specifically, I am supporting, I don't know how you say this, but O2018-22, the ordinance being voted on here tonight to amend the campaign finance ordinance. I work with a nonpartisan citizens group, Represent Us, and we have a Jeffco chapter. And as concerned citizens, this nationwide organization allows us to participate in our democracy in a collaborative and increasingly powerful way. We are looking to adopt the American Anti-Corruption Act throughout the United States as a way of bringing politics down to size. That is, one voter, one vote. The ordinance you are voting on to adopt tonight dovetails with the American Anti-Corruption Act, and I applaud your progressive and proactive stance on transparency and adopting reasonable guidelines for political donations and contributions. Starting at the local level is the way to begin any change hoping to sustain and grow in influence. I wish that our group had participated in developing this document in its working group ad hoc form. We're all heading in the same direction. We learned of this laudable and exciting initiative here in Lakewood from someone in Fort Collins. So, it's our wish to correct this ignorance on our part and to join with you as we all work toward a healthy, dynamic political structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Kentner? Sure you know the rules.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for adopting this. I know as somebody who has helped with campaigns before, that these changes, a lot of them are, come across because we have all been there and done it. And I was noticing in reading through these rules and the reporting requirements, and asked that you very carefully look and see if all of the committees are reporting as you want. I noticed the political committees are not scheduled to report as often as other committees. The candidate committee and issue committees are very specific, and perhaps considering putting the political committees, independent expenditure committees, and small donor committees into the same reporting requirements as the issue committees. Otherwise, there could be a whole year go by before those committees could report. In addition, when, in deleting the $1,000 excess contribution and reporting that within 24 hours, because it does not apply to candidates anymore, I believe that was deleted. But by deleting that, we also then deleted it from all the committees except independent expenditure committees. So, that means currently, for example, issue committees and political committees would have to report those within 24 hours, those $1,000 or more contributions. But with the new ordinance, that goes away. So, I don't know if that was intentional or if that was just an oversight because of the new limits with council candidates. Thank you.
Great, thanks. We'll see if we can get some answers. Anybody else? All right, I'll close public comment. Mr. Abel, do you want to address those two, since you're the Chair of the Committee?
I'm not sure I can address those two. The, I think the thrust of it, though, is that we were trying to encourage the smaller donations and trying to make the larger ones more transparent as to who's producing them. And I think during the discussions, we referred to small donor committees as my nephew's sewing circle, as those kind of folks who get together for a pastime or for some other reason and say, "Hey, why don't we support some political candidates?" And they're limited to, I believe, $50 apiece for the members. Is that right, Mr. Gruiskin?
That's correct.
And so, $50 apiece is the kind of thing we want to encourage. And $10,000 from a special interest group is, not to be discouraged, but to, we would like for the smaller donations to have more impact on our City Council races than the large special interests. But I wasn't aware that there were differences for political committees, Mr. Gruiskin? Which can also be one of those larger, kind of, less transparent groups. Can you explain that, or is my impression wrong?
The concern that was raised by Ms. Kentner in terms of the reporting schedule, I'm just, I'm trying to find the language that would have inadvertently changed that. I haven't, I'm sure I can put my finger on it just at this second. I'm happy to continue to review.
But in general, what we're looking at is a way to return the influence in elections to the community of Lakewood, as opposed to folks who might have other interests in our city and would like to have a lot more influence on council positions and decisions than they should. So, in a nutshell, that's it. We make the donations a much more reasonable amount and apply more transparency to the people who do donate. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are.
Certainly.
Any left after workshops and study sessions and...
So, I have a couple of questions, but I'll wait for Mr. Gruiskin, who's doing some research. Are there non-Mr. Gruiskin questions on council?
I have a section.
Okay. Counselor Skilling?
I don't know if Mr. Gruiskin's looking at the same section, but it looks like 54.040. Is that where you're at? So, there's a lot of mention of various committees within there, and maybe it's the omission of political committees as a specific committee that's the issue. I'm getting a thumbs up from the commenter in the back. So, maybe that's, it's the omission of it, whereas every other committee seems to be specifically called out. Maybe that's the, maybe.
I think the broad language at the beginning of that section, "Except as otherwise provided, all reports that are required to be submitted shall be filed with the Clerk according to the following schedule." So, I think the general rule is that. And then there are some incidental reports that are required because of specific types of either special election schedules or the point at which an issue becomes an issue for purposes of the ordinance. Obviously, the intent was not to create any system that circumscribed a set of committees and allowed them to report less. Obviously, the goal was just the opposite. That's what the Legislative Declaration says. And it seems to me, notwithstanding any sort of exceptional language about the specific committees, notwithstanding, that that broad language applies to all reports and therefore all entities that would be reporting. And therefore, all of them report upon the same schedule.
Under item E, it says, "Any political organization shall report to the city clerk in accordance with the requirements of this chapter." I think that covers it.
Well, a political organization is a very specific kind of entity, but you're right that as to those entities that are sending political messages that don't expressly advocate a candidate, they are expressly covered, both under that provision and under the electioneering.
Right. And my point is that the generic political organization would apply to the uppercase political organization by inclusion.
Well...
They're all political organizations.
Well, for purposes of the ordinance, that political organizations have a very specific designation. That's, that would be those entities organized under Section 527 of the Internal Revenue Code and that are sending political messages that don't otherwise qualify the entity for reporting responsibilities as, for instance, an independent expenditure committee. So, with all due deference, the political organization as it's used here will have that very specific meaning, but that doesn't mean that it is in any way exempt from, as a matter of fact, it has very particularized reporting requirements, so that the city and, more importantly, the city voters know exactly who's sending those messages.
Thank you.
Counselor Vincent?
On page 69, 3 dot 1, the exception, am I reading that? So, anybody who now has excess funds, anybody who comes in prior to the acceptance of this can go ahead and accept up to that amount. So, if somebody here has $5,000 in their account, anybody else who comes in can also match up to that? Am I reading that correctly?
It would be $5,000 donated under the rules as they exist tonight. Surely, anybody's free to raise $5,000 any time, 400 bucks at a time. But yes, it would, it would be the balance period for what can be done before this goes into effect.
Into, into effect. So, for the larger amounts. In excess of 400.
Right. But only up to the amount that's been gathered by the other candidate.
Other candidates for whichever office you're seeking.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So, that provision, as well as the fishbowl provision, were supposed to be offered as amendments, but it's actually part of the body?
I think the things that were offered as an amendment were written into the body, and then if we want to take them out, we can. Is that correct, Mr. Gruiskin?
They are indicated on the red line version that was given to you, where the single underlined changes were those coming from the ad hoc committee, and those that are double underlined are coming from the study session.
All right.
And the fishbowl to refresh knowledge is that campaign events are famous for having a fishbowl in the middle of a table that is supposed to be for donations under the $20 reporting level. And have been, we have been told that those often result in many hundreds of dollars being presented. I have not personally witnessed that.
1999 parties. Counselor Bieda?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought just a couple of comments would be appropriate as a member on this committee. And I would like to just assure the rest of my colleagues as well as the public that a great deal of time and effort was put into this ordinance. We spent many evenings writing this, discussing it, going through it in great detail. As you can imagine, it's fairly detailed kind of task. I think that the committee functioned very well. I was very pleased with the way that our committee functioned. And surprisingly, there was very, I don't think, very little dispute or disagreement. As I recall, there was very little that we did not agree on. It was just a matter of more... It was just a matter of more language and where does it go and sort of those kinds of things. So this was pretty much a joint effort by all five members of the committee, plus our, you know, legal counsel, who was just super in helping us, guiding us. Also, we had a lot of great input from our city clerk's office. They attended every meeting. Someone from city clerk's office, I think, was just about at every meeting that we had. So they went, they had a great deal of input, and that was, we found very valuable because of the practical aspects of a lot of this stuff. You know, it sounds really good on paper until you, until you have to talk to someone that has to enforce it on a day-to-day. So we had, we took all that into account on this thing. And so what I'd like to say, I was very pleased with the effort here. It's not going to be perfect. I think the way we'll find out where the holes are is when we put it into service and the campaign people out, out there come in and, and they'll show us where the holes are. And then we can come back in a year or two and, and start plugging those up, kind of like the dyke, you know? But I think, I think this was a great effort, and I would urge all of our counsel to approve it, and I'm certainly going to vote for it.
Well said. Thank you. Counselor Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I guess I just had the question trying to follow. I mean, I wasn't on the committee, so I certainly wasn't in the weeds, but it sounded like the political committees in the regular election years only have to file once. And I wasn't sure if what we talked about earlier took care of that, or if I'm just misunderstanding, and I'm also a little tired tonight, so, but I'm just trying to make sure that we're not, you know, overlooking the fact of the political committees, making sure that they have to report as often. So I know that's in Section 040, but I wasn't sure if the current language takes care of that, or whether that's something we want to consider as a modest change from the dais.
Mr. Gruskin?
It's, it's my belief that the language that you cite in 040 applies to all reports, and therefore, it takes in all committees and all organizations. Your written comments did identify one or two instances, and I, these were citizen comments, where we could have added a word, organization, in a couple of different places. And I'd certainly be happy to walk through those comments with you, to show you where a couple of those changes might be helpful. But no, I don't see that there is an opening for political committees to file in a, once a year, kind of situation, notwithstanding the...
Okay. And when it talks regular municipal election, I'm assuming that means in the odd years. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correct when it says regular municipal, since we have ours in the, is that correct?
That's opposed to special election.
Right. Okay. So, but a political action committee, could they have something in an even year? Could they be running something else locally in an even year and somehow bypass the requirement, bypass the reporting requirement? Is what I'm...
Political, I'm sorry.
Did that make sense? I'm trying to ascertain, yeah.
Right. So the ordinance provides for political committees, which are only in support of candidates?
That makes, that's all I need. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Royball?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just got a simple question, and I just wanted to kind of get some clarification. And I wanted to find out is that if you couldn't, and obviously, I'll just kind of let the cat out of the bag. I'm termed out, so I can no longer run, but I need to ask this question. Do we have the same limitations on contributions if you personally donate to your campaign?
No. Constitutionally, neither the state nor even a home rural municipality can impose limits on a candidate's own contributions to one's own campaign.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So Mr. Gruskin or Counselor Abel, maybe you can walk me through 3.1, which is the exception. And I guess my only question, it's not clear. So for folks that ran in 15 or folks that ran in 17 and continue to file yearly reports, if I read 3.1 with this exception language, that, this language takes you back to your origination in 17 or in 15? If you kept your committee open, so if you in 17 took a certain, a certain amount of contributions under our previous, anybody that runs against you then would have the opportunity to raise that amount going back to 17 or 15?
I believe the answer to your question, if I understand it correctly, is yes. That if, let's say, you had already raised $2,500 under the pre-existing limits, and under the limits that apply going forward, you couldn't raise contributions in excess of either 400 or 800, depending upon your office. But if someone was running against you, they could take the same amount of money that you already have taken under the old limits, under anything exceeding these, the going-forward limits, so that in essence, they are, they have the same capacity.
Sure, sure, sure. So, but it's based on what is in the account, the last report that is existing, the balance. And I just want to make sure that's clear, because what, the way I read it, is that if you ran in 17 or you ran in 15, you're subjected to the new ordinance. But your opponent would not be subjected based upon what type of contributions. I don't see that it sets that baseline clear in this language of that, that's the dollar. So say there's $2,500 in an account, there would be no limits up until that $2,500.
But take your comment seriously, that the language isn't clear, as clear as it needs to be. The intent there was if you had raised $2,500...
Under the previous...
Under the previous ordinance.
Right. Then anybody who comes in can raise $2,500 under the previous.
Right. You don't need to have that money, that current balance. You don't need to have that money currently in your account. The point is that you have raised that money in excess of the limits that has provided you with certain political capacity.
So if you walk through this, though, just one second, if you walk through this, the thing that says the op, well, it has one effect, and that is somebody who didn't run in 2015 would be allowed to raise money in a fashion that was raised in 2015, but the person who did run in 2015 is subjected to new rules. So there would be no, no limits. The way this reads, there's no limits for the, for somebody new running. The limits only apply to somebody who did run and may be running again.
Up to the amount that was raised under the old system.
Right. So if you go back to 2017 or 2015, some of these races, there was substantial money raised.
It is, I believe, only the money you have existing in your account...
That's what I thought, too.
Right now.
Right now.
And what Mr. Gruskin said makes me a little bit nervous.
Exactly.
Because if that's the case, I mean, for instance, I got a donation from a little cafe around the corner for 300 bucks. So since they can't, they're not an LLC, they're a corporation. So since they couldn't contribute now, my opponent could raise 300 bucks from a corporation, but no more than that. And up to the amount that I have currently in my campaign chest, that is how we were hoping to have it worded.
That isn't what he said.
But, right. So it is sounding to me like now, if you raised $110,000 last year, Mayor, that you couldn't raise that kind of money now, but your opponent could. And that's, even though yours is all spent, so you would be at a disadvantage. I think the idea was that if you have 5,000 bucks now and it all came from, I don't know, some, some corporation that's not allowed to donate it now, then that could be matched, but nothing beyond that. And it would be up to the amount you were able to retain from the last, whatever you start out with your war chest in now.
Right. So I think we need to get that language clear with an amendment, or just pull 3.1 out. And I think it'd be fair to say, I'm just gonna, that nobody up here probably has over $4,000 in a campaign account.
Well, we don't know the last, the last filing report that is correct. But there are people that have joined the race, and we don't know what they've raised so far, and...
But as far as the sitting, sitting elected officials, is it fair to say that, well, I don't know?
All they'd be doing, hopefully, the wording will reflect that all they can do is catch up with us.
So maybe we could work on that. I think we need, is there an idea of where we're trying to go?
I think I now understand what the, what the goal is, that maybe I had not understood or misunderstood previously, so...
Could you offer some language that we could amend this with?
That's what I do.
On the spot?
Well, but, but I guess what I'm getting to is if, if of this group up here of people that have active accounts, I'm not, and I could be wrong, people might have tens of thousands of dollars, but I don't...
There are other people that have active accounts out there.
Right. But they wouldn't be, I guess they would be subjected.
And we don't know what they are at the moment.
Okay. Counselor Gutwin?
So, big picture, I'm really proud of everything that we've done, and I think that at one point, I'm not sure who made this statement, but that we're going to have the best campaign finance, municipal campaign finance in the state. So I'm really proud of all the work that we've done to make this more transparent and more fair and get confidence from the, the community in that way. I also am kind of trying to work through these new amendments and have some concerns about making sure that we get that one cleaned up. And then I also, could you point me, please, to the fishbowl, what we've been calling the fishbowl amendment? Because I can't find the new version of the fishbowl.
We're still on time.
If you give me just...
Thank you.
One second. But basically, the, the word fishbowl does not appear?
Yes. No, I, I am aware of that. I think...
The bad news is that means it's camouflaged, but it was camouflaged as a function of the required reporting for even cash donations, so...
And do we still require the reporting for the cash donations? Because that was my understanding, is that we were going to require the reporting for even cash. And it was... Let me see. That is so distracting for me to see myself on that. On what, do you know what page?
It says all disclosure prohibited, constitutionally. It's 74 of 197. It's page 74 out of 197.
Okay.
Mr. Gruskin, would you like five minutes to try to research and maybe come up with language?
Could you give him the suggestion you just gave me? Put it on the record, the mayor was suggesting two easy sentences that would make this a lot more clear.
Yeah. So for 3.1, I think you just say, in an existing account, any, the dollar amount, the actual dollar amount available in an existing campaign account upon adoption of this ordinance would be, would allow another candidate or somebody new to raise up to that amount under the old rules.
Would be exempt from the new fundraising.
Until they reach that threshold.
But doesn't that, does that assume that the donations, there were donations of, of an amount equal to whatever is now in the account, that exceeded the old limits?
Yeah. Okay.
Or were, excuse, exceeded the new limits? And if, if you want to create that presumption, but I don't know if that's an accurate...
How about something like money in an existing account that was raised under the old rules would be, that same amount would be exempt to other candidates, would be exempt from new fundraising requirements up to that amount by other candidates in the race?
So where I, so where I was, I mean, this is where I honestly was trying to get at. I don't know that there is that much money in campaign accounts. I know there could be one, there's been one new candidate since January 1st who put in. But as far as everybody up here, if we had one open, we filed, and I can honestly say, I think there's 3,000 in mine to date. And I don't know what other people might have, so I don't know if we're playing with a lot. Dana has 74 cents. So I just, I'm saying, I don't...
I think it's about that.
So Dana's opponent could raise 74 cents from a corporation.
So I want to, I know that my, my thing up here looks like a Christmas tree. And there's a lot of folks...
And what you're saying, is the, is the risk worth all the heartburn?
Right. So could we just take five minutes? Is that acceptable? Okay. So if you have one question that's going to help with the quick recess, so Counselor Vincent, Counselor Johnson, Counselor Franks?
Sorry. I'm going to throw out the question, because we're talking about the money amounts, but we also are now prohibiting from certain entities, labor unions and corporations, et cetera. So do we need to put something in that on 3 dot 1? Because you could, you could go to a PAC or, I'm sorry, a corporation or a labor union and get an excess amount as to what you had before. So does that need to be included in that?
Good question.
I think they are by inference.
Counselor Johnson, then Franks?
Thank you. It occurred to me that we've only gotten one candidate that has made declaration of running in Ward 1, and that person will be held to the same standard that everybody else is after this is voted on. However, if that individual is out making, fundraising it right now and getting a large amount, it puts the seated counselor at a disadvantage. And so to me, this was a one-time correction. Whereas for this particular election year, if that candidate is getting a lot of money, then the challenger, Charlie, you should be able to get the same amount that she's been getting while we're playing with this campaign finance. That has occurred to me, and I would like to, that's what I thought we were doing, as much as if anybody else had money in their campaign prior, then if somebody else jumps into that race, then they should be able to get the money up to that same amount that's currently in the balance. And this would only be a one year where this kind of a thing would happen, just to play, to keep the playing field even. Is that what your intent is, Charlie?
Yes.
Right.
But not, not tied to any specific candidate.
Yeah.
I've got 800 bucks. So if, if a challenger wants to raise 800 bucks, I'd, they're welcome to do it any way they wish.
It's if they're raising 60,000 prior to this going in. That's the issue.
That's the issue. A theoretical candidate.
Counselor Franks?
Thanks, Counselor Johnson. I had the same question. I mean, we're obviously, folks know we were discussing this, and so we certainly have to respect that, we want fairness across the board. The other thing is, like, I have a balance, and I'm just going to throw it out there. I think it's somewhere in the $500 range, but I loaned myself several thousand dollars. So I haven't paid my, so I really don't really have a balance. My, you know, I'm just saying, I owe myself a few thousand, I've only got about 500, so for people in that position, but I think this is only a one-year correction. I don't think it's a big deal, but someone would be able to raise 500, even though I really don't have that. And then I heard something else, I'm not sure if I heard it right, that they would be constricted... be constricted by the source of the money. But money goes all into a pot. And so mine, I didn't go in and when I spent it out, I didn't say, well, I'm spending out the money that came from my neighbors down the street and then I spent out the money. Now, I didn't get any big business money, certainly, but I'm just saying that I don't know how, let's just say Mayor Paul did have money left over, how would he know the source of that money so they could raise the same one? Did I hear that wrong or what?
It should be on his campaign report.
Yes, so you would be able to know where my donate, where it all went and what's left over on all of our reports. I mean...
Well, what's left over, but not the source of the specific, what's, the 3,000, you're not gonna be able to say, 1,000 came from an LLC and 2,000, because you didn't spend it out that way. So how are we limiting the other person with the monies if, there'd be no way I could tell you the 500 is just left from the fund, the pool?
Well, you would actually get pretty close, I mean, this is, and this is where it's hard to do a general, you'd get pretty close on mine because I think mine was spent down in 2015 to within $500. So anything that's come in since 2015, which is like $2,000, you would know that gap of what those dollars, where those dollars came from personally, right? So you would have that track record. Yeah. So, go ahead, Mr. Gruskin.
This is a rhetorical question maybe, but the issue may be moot if 3.1 is unnecessary, if the balances that you're talking about are relatively insignificant, then what you'll end up doing is creating opportunities for fundraising from sources and in amounts that, you know, aren't really going to, candidates aren't gonna have to use them so much as to actually get even in a way that is material to the outcome of the election. So I'd just throw out there the possibility that maybe 3.1 isn't necessary if you're not looking at candidates that have raised significant amounts of money and are retaining significant amounts of money.
So just real quick, in your experience, when the state has adjusted limits or other communes that you've worked with, how have they handled this?
The, I'm not aware of a get-even kind of provision that's been used. Basically, it's, you know, new system goes into effect and it usually is prospective, as this one will be. There are certain advantages that certain candidates will bring. Just one of you may have some money in your account that you'll carry over, another candidate may be capable of self-funding. The purpose, and the legislative declaration points this out, the purpose of this ordinance is not about evening the playing field. And I say that because the courts have routinely struck down ordinances and statutes that have been passed for that purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to bring this funding of local races back to the grassroots of Lakewood and to maximize disclosure and disclaimers so that there is information, so that there can be the most knowledgeable voting possible. And therefore, the get-even provision, particularly to the extent that we're not talking about a significant gap, may actually create an opportunity for compliance problems that don't really have an impact of dissuading candidates from getting into a race and funding to an adequate level. So I guess the practical problems with my drafting may highlight the need either to revamp that section or to delete it depending upon your discretion.
Counselor...
It strikes me that there might also be problems if we allow a candidate to raise money in a one-way and their opponent who already has some money in the bank cannot raise that way, it's unequal. So it might be cleaner all the way around if we just strike 3.1. And I think we found out in the last election, it's ideas, not money, that wins elections anyway. Hopefully, that will continue.
Well said, that might alleviate a recess and get us moving. Counselor Skilling and then Harrison. Counselor Harrison. And Counselor Gutwin.
All I was gonna suggest is exactly what Charlie did, so thank you.
We'll do a consensus on that.
Is there consensus on the redaction of 3.1?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a, we do have consensus. Uh, did you find the fishbowl?
I did.
Okay. Where's the fishbowl, please?
The fishbowl is in, um, section, sorry, section 30D1, where, which is entitled, it's all committees, disclosures, prohibited contributions, and one is disclosures. And the double underlined section at the end of 1A requires reporting of the amount contributed of any contribution made in currency or coin.
Do you have a page, by any chance?
Sure, I show 15 on the hard copy, Counselor.
On ours?
Page 108 of the packet, 108 of 197.
108.
108?
108.
As well as the, yeah, so I think that encapsulates what the goal was. Yeah, it does.
No, hold on, it's consistent. And this is, that's candidates, right. In addition, Margie points out that 30A4 relating to reports requires candidates to report the name, address, and amount contributed of any person whose contribution is made in currency or coin. So you say it twice just to make sure that there's no lack of clarity for people who might, might miss it or might be out of habit, used to not reporting those amounts.
Counselor Gutwin?
Thank you. Okay, so in D1A, I just want to check my understanding. So it says contributions over $20 and that you must include the name and address of each person who's contributed more than $20. But then later, at the end, it says, as well as the contributor's name and address and the amount contributed of any contribution made in currency or coin. So that means any amount, if you give $5, you must include the contributor's name and address or it only applies to $20 and above.
So it should just say, any contribution?
That's correct. I think the, the title of A would be improved by, as opposed to saying contributions over $20, striking over $20.
Okay.
And then similarly, um, the phrase, including the name and address of each person who has contributed, striking more than $20. And perhaps inserting to the committee.
Great. Thank you. I think that's in line with what we had originally had in our committee recommendation. And then 4A, 34A. Could do something again.
4A also has the same issue. So it'd be a duplicate correction when the motion is made. Is it the same language?
It's on recording.
Okay, I'm looking for the page. Oh.
Page 102.
For...
102.
Of the packet.
102.
Yeah, 102.
So do I need to make an amendment or offer an amendment of that?
So I want to exhaust any more questions and then we'll seek a quick opinion on what we need to do in the final motion, which I'll ask Counselor Abel to make about 3.1 as well as these two pieces so we can be clear.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. Counselor Johnson, you have a question?
I do, on the disclosures on contributions, are you saying that basically every contribution then needs to have a name and address attached to it?
Yes.
I would just like to remind you all, running for office is a very difficult journey to go down. And I don't know about you, but when I've ever had a fishbowl, if you will, I have never gotten more than 40 or 50 bucks in it. People will put a $5 bill, a $10 bill, and then they take off. We're gonna make this so onerous on ourselves that it's gonna be very, very difficult to run for office. I'm just warning you, when you accept contributions under 20, just be careful, that's all. I don't agree with taking, with changing this.
Counselor Gutwin?
So we had, I think everyone's kind of laughing when I talk about the fishbowl because we had so many conversations about the fishbowl. And I really understand what you're saying. Thing is, is that one of our big goals in this committee was to ensure transparency of all of our donations. And while maybe you only had a $40 fishbowl, there were records of, and I don't recall who, but that there could be several hundred dollars in these fishbowls. And then over the course of the campaign, there could be even $1,000 of fishbowls. So imagine if you had a, if a candidate, say I, went to a lunch at, say, 2:40 Union and I came out and I said I have $2,000 and they all came from $20 donations. That might raise some eyebrows and some, you know, doesn't leave a lot of confidence. And so I do understand that it is, you know, annoying to, if you give $5, to write down your name and your address, but I think that we can do that and I think that it ensures that there are no loopholes and there's no sneaking around and you can, we can account for all of the money. And if you can write down your name and address for a $20 bill, I think you can do that for a $5 bill, so.
Well, I, yeah, and I would echo that. I think, you know, we have prohibitive, so you could essentially, we've banned union contributions, but you could go to a union event and have the whole union write you $19.99 checks and not have to report it. And you could get to $5,000. And in fact, the state legislature, I think you probably recall this, that was an issue that they had, 1999 parties. So I think if you have to fill out something for $21, it's fine to fill out something for 19.
I'd just like to say, let's not let perfection get in the way of being practical. And would you please share that contribute or your invite list? I'd love to have those people come to mine.
Well, that was completely theoretical. I didn't have ever a fishbowl at any of my campaigns and didn't have any on, yeah. Never had a fishbowl.
Yeah, thank you. I was just gonna reiterate that point that you made is that, you know, we tried to plug all the other holes in this thing. And so to us, this looked like the fishbowl, which was once kind of just a very mundane thing that none of us ever saw. I agree, but now that was the one, one of the holes that we would have left open here for the, exactly the kind of abuse you're talking about. So we said, well, I mean, as much as we hate to do it and discussed all of the issues that Counselor Johnson has mentioned, I don't think we had much choice. But otherwise, we're just leaving that hole wide open and somebody's gonna drive a truck through it, a money truck.
All right. So could we get some language? And I would ask that if, that's a mean of all that Counselor Abel would make a motion. So it would be accepting the ordinance minus 3.1?
I may have the language here. Can I take a shot?
Please.
I move that we adopt ordinance zero, or ordinance O-2018-22, repealing and replacing Chapter 2.54 of the Lakewood Municipal Code Concerning Campaign and Political Finance and Municipal Elections, with the exception of Section 3.1, which will be eliminated, and references requiring, and all references will require attribution of all contributions, including those of $20 and less, or less.
Don't second it yet, please.
Right. Did you get all of that and does that sound right?
Would you like to know the language that would be substituted for the two paragraphs that have been noted so that...
We would eliminate 3.1 and in the other paragraphs, we would require attribution of all contributions. We could even add a phrase of all contributions, including those of $20 or less. But I think we would, it would suffice just to say, and require attribution of all contributions. Period. That way, that would give us the leeway to strike the language that needs to be stricken in those two language, in those two paragraphs and any other that might contain that language. Shall I do that again?
I will.
Okay.
So...
Repeal and replace Chapter 2.54 of the Lakewood Municipal Ordinance Concerning Campaign and Political Finance and Municipal Elections with the elimination of Section 3.1 and the requirement that all contributions be attributed to the person and...
Entity.
And, or entity which donated. Shall we say by, you know, name, address, and...
But Mr. Cox, looks like he wants to...
Well, just, I understand what Counselor Abel is wrestling with to try to get the best language possible. We, we have language in the ordinance that has to be deleted and replaced with something. So I think maybe the motion needs to say, in addition to the deletion of 3.1 and further section, whatever, or sections referring to...
Those sections would be?
There was...
D1A.
D1A, but there's gonna be more to that.
34A. Would you like to...
And are those the only two?
2.54, 34A.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I believe that's, that's the case.
Yeah. So it seems to me there's two ways to, two ways to do it. One would be to say, we're deleting 3.1 and we're deleting the...
Any reference to...
Well, my point is to say, delete that paragraph and replace it with what you're suggesting. Or we do what we did the first time around, which was strike this phrase, as, you know, Mark identified, strike this phrase, strike that phrase, substitute this phrase. So I think the motion either has to identify what's coming out, what's going in, or it needs to say, we're taking out that paragraph and replacing it with the language you proposed. And I also understand you're trying to cover multiple sections, but I do think we've indicated there are two sections that address this topic of contributions under $20.
And then we could add the language requiring attribution in place of 3.1?
Not in place of 3.1, in place of the paragraphs that have the $20, under the $20 limit now.
Okay. So I move the adoption of Ordinance O-218, 2018-22, repealing and replacing Chapter 2.54 of the Lakewood Municipal Code Concerning Campaign and Political Finance and Municipal Elections with the elimination of Paragraph 3.1 and Sections B1A and 34A.
To further read...
To further read that all contributions, including those... To further read that all contributions, including those of $20 and less, require attribution. Or require listing of the donor.
Mr. Gruskin, yeah?
You're, you're going to want to make sure that it includes the name, the address.
Oh, we have not, the name and address? Okay, okay.
And that's currently in the ordinance.
Okay.
So.
Include the name and address of the donors of all contributions, including those of $20 and less. Or less.
Just one caveat, the ordinance, the provisions, the two provisions that we're obsessing about, thanks to me, is also address the requirement that expenditures and obligations be reflected. So just by having the attribution of all contributions, you will also probably be inadvertently deleting the requirement that expenditures be listed, which might not serve the ultimate purpose of the ordinance. But I, I do have some modest tweaks to the existing language that might get you to that full attribution, if you'd like.
That might be good. I think I am doing rather poorly in my first tryout as a pro temp. So would you please?
Mr. Cox.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gruskin had said a little while ago when we first looked at D1A and 34A, and that is 34A, not 34A. Just, we keep saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right?
Right, 30.4.
Different words. But Mr. Gruskin had indicated that the way to address that in, in D1A was to strike the language over $20, strike the language more than $20, and insert to the committee. That's.
I, I think I've, I've perfected it a little bit so that it actually reads well. The, the change to D1A, that subsection would now read, "Contributions," period. "All political committees, issue committees, exploratory committees, and small donor committees shall report to the city clerk their contributions received during a reporting period, including the name, address, and amount contributed by each contributor, semicolon, expenditures made, semicolon, and obligations entered into by the committee."
Can I just accept that language as part of my amendment?
So I, I think the best thing to do, why don't you make a motion? Let's, let's get a motion on the floor to adopt the ordinance. And then we'll do a subsequent, we'll do a subsequent on 3.1 to remove it. And that way, if folks don't want to support the amendments, they can vote no on the amendments. And then we'll do the secondary language on both of these individually.
Okay. I kind of feel like New Orleans had to score three times last night to get six points. Three touchdowns.
We're, we're almost on time.
Okay. I move for the adoption of ordinance zero, 2018-22, repealing and replacing Chapter 2.54 of the Lakewood Municipal Code Concerning Campaign and Political Finance and Municipal Elections.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Cox, before we go to the amendments.
Oh, I was just going to address the structure of the amendments.
Okay, please.
Please.
So at this point, I think we'd say, there'd be a separate motion now to amend the ordinance by, by the deletion of Paragraph 3.1, right? And then was your intention, Mr. Mayor, to do them each as a separate amendment? So that would be the next motion was, is to amend the adoption of the original ordinance with 3.1 deleted.
And I move to amend the original ordinance by deletion of Paragraph 3.1.
I, I second.
So now we need to take a vote on that.
On that.
So is everybody clear on the amendment? Okay.
Could you please clarify exactly what we're doing?
Yes. So, so this would, this would delete Section 3.1, which is page nine on my hard copy. But that is the exception, certain contribute, the whole, the whole paragraph that you had a question about. So this amendment would delete 3.1 from the body of the ordinance.
Because my thought was, it was only a one-time application on 3.1 to level the play, playing field. Right?
But we can't level playing fields legally. We have to do this as an effort for transparency and openness. So yes, it would eliminate Paragraph 3.1, which would be the makeup provision.
Okay, so if your opponents now got $50,000.
That's fine. I have to deal with it.
Okay. I disagree, but that's.
And I also want to be careful. There's some indication that somebody might be a candidate up here and that's not.
None of this should be construed as being directed at any candidate.
There you go. Thank you. So there's a, there's a motion and a second for the amendment striking 3.1. Any more discussion? Please cast your votes.
Won't take my vote, Mayor.
You're kidding me? All right. Can you please clear? Well, Counselor Abel's button's not working now. It was just working. Mr. Gruskin, can you clear those? Or I'll clear them. All right. Please cast your votes. Amendment. There we go. Counselor Abel?
Okay.
All right. That passes 10 ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Johnson. And now we'd move into the second amendment.
Right. And I don't have the language that Mr. Gruskin cited, but the same principle here. This would be to amend the ordinance as it exists by, what'd you say, deleting paragraph and replacing it with the following, something like that?
So it would be deletion of Section 2.54.0304A, and replacing it with the following language. "All candidate committees shall report to the city clerk their contributions received, comma, including the name, comma, address, comma, and amount contributed by each contributor, semicolon, expenditures made, semicolon, and obligations entered into by the committee." Which also, just for better transparency, omits the word "or party", which is a hangover of the statute and not relevant to the party activity. And that would be, period, after the word "committee."
My words exactly.
So is that a, so moved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So there's a motion and a second on that language pertaining to all contributions being reported of $20 or less. All of them. All of them. Is that confusing? Please cast your votes. All right. Passes 11 ayes, 0 nays. And then we'll need to repeat that same motion for?
There would also be an amendment to Section 2.54.030D1A, currently entitled "Contributions Over $20", that this amendment would strike subsection A and replace it with the following language. "Contributions and disclosure," period. "All political committees, comma, issue committees, comma, exploratory committees, and small donor committees shall report to the city clerk their contributions received during a reporting period, comma, including the name, comma, address, comma, and amount contributed by each contributor, semicolon, expenditures made, semicolon, and obligations entered into by the committee," period. Also omitting the words "or party". And I would just note for you that the next subsection also happens to include "or party" at the end. So you may want to make a conforming amendment. But that would be the language to replace 2.54.030D1A.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Please cast your votes. 11 ayes, 0 nays. And you want us to make an amendment to strike, or can that just be?
To the extent that you choose to do so, 2.54.0301B, it would simply be omitting the words "or party" at the end of that subsection.
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Great. All right. So Counselor Abel, will you now make a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Gruen.
I just really quickly wanted to thank Pam Feely, who came to many of our meetings and literally wrote the book on some of this stuff and really appreciate all of the input that she gave, as well as many other members of the community. So thank you.
Counselor, a beer?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I want to thank everybody on the committee. Did a lot of good work. I enjoyed working on all of this and I'm excited to see how it plays out. And I also look forward to continuing to work on some of the cleanup provisions that I know we'll be looking at. Thanks.
Counselor Abel?
There couldn't have been a committee that was easier to chair. As Councilman Bita mentioned earlier, most of our, the results were by unanimous consensus, which is the true definition of consensus. And it went, it went smoothly. No animosity. It was a pleasure to work with this group. Thank you all.
And I'd just like to echo everything that's been said. I want to thank the chair and the committee members, as well as the community who engaged. This is my second go-around on campaign finance, and it certainly may not be perfect. But we'll learn throughout the years and we'll, it's an ebb and flow, so I think this is a good step forward. I certainly will be supporting. Any other comments? There's a first and second. Please cast your votes. And that passes 11 ayes, 0 nays. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Gruskin. Okay. So does counsel want to take a quick recess, or do you want to keep?
Before Mr. Gruskin leaves, this couldn't have been done without him. He is the preeminent elections attorney in the state. And not to keep him any longer with praise, but thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
Common cause and everyone else thinks it's the best there is in our state, and it's because of you.
Thank you. It was an honor to do this work and to work for the city of Lakewood. I have proudly told many people in the last few weeks who are looking to do some things at the state level that you all have had more innovative conversations than I think I've ever seen in the state of Colorado about campaign finance.
And you're getting, you're getting some claps from the audience, so.
That was very charitable. Thank you.
So it's 9:58. Let's come back at 9:10 and, or, sorry, 10:10. We're only 40 minutes behind. We'll make it up real fast. All right. All right.
Residential, which is R16. The properties to the west are also single-family residential. The properties to the north are multifamily residential and the property to the east is mixed-use residential urban. This site is generally surrounded with residential uses. To the north, there is multifamily residential and on the next lot, to the east, there is a park. To the east, there is multifamily residential. To the south, there is single-family residential and to the west is also a single-family residential. The primary long-range planning document for guiding land use decisions is the Lakewood 2025 Moving Forward Together Comprehensive Plan. The plan includes a vision, guiding principles, goals, action steps, and a growth area map. The growth area map shows the land area intended to accommodate the vast majority of residential unemployment increase anticipated for the city. As depicted in the figure on the screen, the subject property is within the growth area. The comprehensive plan also has a more detailed map for the area around the Lamar Station. In the map on the screen, the subject properties are within the lower-density residential section. However, the proposal can still be considered for compliance with the comprehensive plan because the properties are still within the Lamar Station area. The proposed zone district is mixed-use residential urban and the intent of the MR Zone District is to allow for compact residential development with a variety of densities. This district will also allow for office and retail uses that are integrated into residential projects. Minimum residential densities are established as part of the district to maximize the potential number of transit riders and business users within adjacent transit stations while also limiting the impact of development on existing surrounding land uses. The MR Zone District includes specific development standards, including a height transition zone, build-to zone, and a landscape transition. Additionally, the MR Zone District limits development in the following ways. The maximum commercial or office use per building is limited to 20% of the gross floor area. Or stated differently, the maximum non-residential use that would fit on the site is approximately 3,000 square feet. There's a 75-foot-wide height transition zone when an M-zone district abuts an R-zone district where single-family and duplex structures exist. This effectively limits the height to 35 feet across the property. And third, there's a 125-foot-wide design transition zone. This provision will allow staff to include neighborhood comments regarding the architectural On the screen is the conceptual land use plan. The plan shows the property boundary with a heavy black line. The developable area is represented with a 45-degree hatch. The setbacks are shown with a dashed line and the access location is represented with the dark arrow. As part of the site development, the developer will be required to build curb, gutter, and detached sidewalk along the property frontages. Additionally, there would be some drainage improvements. As part of the process, there was a neighborhood meeting. The neighborhood organization expressed support for the project and the questions at the meeting were mostly about existing conditions, building and site design, public improvements, and process. In the packet, there were two letters of support. Planning cases that require a public hearing must follow procedural requirements defined in the zoning ordinance. More specifically, notice was sent to 485 owners of property within 500 feet, five neighborhood and business organizations. It was published in the paper, posted in Civic Center, and posted on the property. Additionally, referrals were sent to outside agencies. Six responses were received, but none had any objections. Within the zoning ordinance for rezonings, there are three rezoning criteria. First is conformance with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The second review criteria is compatibility with surrounding land uses or land uses envisioned in the comprehensive plan. And then the third, which is a two-part, which is an either-or, is either consistency with the comprehensive plan or a material change in the neighborhood. The proposed rezoning supports the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance for the following reasons. Public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Lakewood will be improved because it will provide an opportunity for development that is adjacent to public transportation. And the rezoning process supports the intent of the zoning ordinance by promoting orderly development through a public process and allowing an opportunity in an area that is desired by the community, as demonstrated by the letters of support. And third, the rezoning will support an opportunity to provide a range of housing types to meet the current and future needs of the city. In looking at the second review criteria in more detail, the proposed rezoning is compatible with existing surrounding land uses or the land uses envisioned by the comprehensive plan because the MRU Zone District will provide a transition between the single-family residential to the west and the multifamily residential to the east. And again, keeping in mind, there's a 35-foot height limitation due to that height transition. Additionally, the zoning standards have specific limitations when adjacent to single-family and two-family, which will help the character. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan because the subject property is within a growth zone and the rezoning will support the community's vision. And additionally, there's been a material change in the neighborhood, which is demonstrated by the multifamily building across the street known as West Line Flats. Based on the information provided, Anthony Brocato, the property owner, is proposing to rezone from small-lot residential to mixed-use residential urban. And the notification requirements were satisfied and the request was reviewed by the appropriate referral agencies. And the proposed rezoning promotes the purpose and intent of the Lakewood zoning ordinance. And the proposed rezoning is compatible with the existing surrounding land uses. And the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as well as there has been a material change in the neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt the findings and fact of order A through H as presented in the staff report and, per the recommendation of the Lakewood Planning Commission, an approved rezoning case RZ 18003. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. So before I open the public comment, I'll just mention there is a written sheet titled "Rezoning Hearings" in the back, I imagine. Okay. On green paper available on the table by the entrance to the city council chambers, for those of you who may be unfamiliar with the steps we follow in conducting the hearing, you are welcome to get a copy of this information at any time. All persons present should be advised that the city council has received and reviewed the written findings and recommendations of the planning commission in this manner. We have also received a notice that the entire record is available for review by members of council. The city council must consider only the record before the planning commission, the written findings and recommendations of the planning commission, any previously filed written objections to those findings and recommendations, and the comments relating to them made during the hearing. It is not necessary, therefore, for the applicant or any proponent or any protestant to repeat any presentation, argument, or information given to the planning commission. Any person who wishes to speak will be limited to the same rules. We would welcome that you'd sign up with your name and address. And I will now open the public hearing on this item. The applicant is here and so nobody has indicated wish to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and I will ask for a motion to move this into the discussion phase.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O 2018-1 on second and final reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, Councilor Franks. Okay, so this is a rezone in Ward 2. I'll go ahead and start with Councilors LaBiere and Vincent.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just have a couple of questions here. I do like the idea of, you know, having some for sale townhomes in the ward and I know, you know, market rate, housing, and opportunities for homeownership are something that's big on people's minds in this side of town. So I think that's, that's just sort of great to acknowledge. I am curious, is this the lowest zoning that would fulfill the need of the applicant?
Yes, in terms of looking at the, the zone districts, the MRU is the most appropriate zoning and it allows for townhome development. RMF does allow for townhome development, but there's more contiguity with the property next door. And the RMF zone district wouldn't have that height transition requirement.
And there have been no, no one objecting to this as of yet?
During the planning commission public hearing, there was concern over parking for the project. So there was some concern over it, but in terms of, I haven't received any written response and objection to it.
Is there a requirement for parking with this zoning or with this product?
It depends on the use. So for townhomes, the proposal that I've seen would require a zoning lot and staff could require parking for the proposal I've seen.
Okay.
Councilor Vincent?
When we talk about material change in the neighborhood, and I probably need this for further education because there are a lot of changes that are happening, we, we specifically talked about the one to the east, but the material change in there has been, these, these people around there have a four-story building and I don't have any objection to the townhome, but there are, they've lost horse property, they've lost a lot of acreage. So I have heard that there's some, starting to be some concern that we look at one area, but we don't look at what's changed. So can you just help me understand that?
Yes, I will to the best of my ability. So in terms of material change in the neighborhood, you know, I think what that's getting at is, is, is there is, you know, as development happens over time and areas do transition, that it lends itself to having opportunities for all the property owners in an area. And so material change in a neighborhood talks to the change that occurs over time.
And I think that's, that's basically where I'm trying to get to. At what point, what point does, does it stop? In other words, we have a four-story, then we have, you know, we lose horse property, we lose acreage, and then those people become concerned. So where does it stop that material change so that what is in the neighborhood, and this is related to this, where does the neighborhood then start losing its character? Or what's there?
Ultimately, that's a decision that the city council makes. I mean, you've, you and previous city councils have given guidance in the comprehensive plan. It lays out where growth is anticipated and where stable neighborhoods are to be protected. And that's really the guidance that, that we look at when we're making a recommendation.
Okay. And then how far is this? Because all we have is, is the station plan, really, for the Lamar Station plan. So how far away is this from the center? Is it a quarter, half? Because it goes up, the transit stops, I think, at a half.
So, so this is the, from the comprehensive plan, and so this is what shows the Lamar Station area map. And so the, the color indications are showing the, the area that's anticipated for lower-density and then for medium-density residential. And so the, I apologize if maybe I should have taken a little more time on the slide. But so the star indicates the properties, you know, that are proposed for rezoning and they are on the lighter-colored, lower-density residential side, but it's right on that edge. So I think your questions are spot-on in terms of what makes sense in terms of rezoning for these particular properties with the height transition and then the, the multifamily residential to the west, it would provide a transition.
Yeah, because that was, that was the feedback that we got back at the, the community meeting, too, was it was a good transitional phrase. So, okay, thank you.
Councilor Skilling?
I have two questions. One, and I think we saw it on the slides, the second to last, and then again in the presentation, that this was compatible or comports with the comp plan. But then in the packet on 145, it explicitly says that it does not comply. The comprehensive plan would not support the proposal at the proposed density. And then there's a however, and you get into the parts about the material change or something about it being considered in compliance because there's such strong neighborhood support. Can we speak to that at all? Did that change between the time of this application and then the slides? Because there seems to be some difference there, or maybe I'm just not tracking.
Could you point me to the, to the page?
Page 145, oh, page six of nine of the handout, which, I got a lot of page numbers. 145 of our packet, page six of nine of the rezoning packet. It's the same.
Is it in the staff report?
Is this?
Okay, now I get it.
Yeah, I have that here, too.
No, but I, I know which page it is. So to, let me get back to that. To answer the first part of your question, so it hasn't changed, and I apologize if the language is confusing. So in terms of the, the comprehensive plan, so the, if you were to look at the lower-density residential and the medium-density residential as a, as a hard line represented in there, it is in the lighter beige-colored area as it is on that map. But the indication back from comprehensive planning was that, including the neighborhood support and the conversations that led up to the, to the Lamar Station area map, that that, that line wasn't drawn as a, as a hard border. So the, the attempt was trying to explain that, you know, looking at those two colors and the way it's depicted on the map, it is, it is in the beige area, but it could still be considered for consistency with the comprehensive plan because it's, it's not intended to be a hard line.
The, the part that you call the beige area, that's the lower-density residential, that's where the existing single families are. Is that why it's drawn in the way that it is?
Correct.
Okay. Because when you look around the property that we're talking about, there's just single-family homes on that entire block, correct?
Correct.
And you don't start seeing the bigger stuff until you cross the street into the dark brown areas like the, the giant apartment building across the way.
Correct.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. My other question was about the different types of zoning that could be used in this property. Is there any consideration to an MNS zoning instead of the MRU? And the reason I mention that is because the MRU has some setbacks, which may be problematic for somebody that lived right behind this project. Because my understanding and reading it, the MRU would only allow, or would allow five feet from that property line. So if you look at the picture of that, of the house, both on the side of it, which I guess would be the rear of the project in this case, and then south, you've got two residential properties that are right up on that. So if you were to build a project that's 35 feet tall, I mean, they're right there in an MRU district, or at least they could be built right there. And I'm assuming if it's a half-acre property, trying to fit this many townhouses in there, I think it's what, 14, 15 townhouses, they're going to need to come up to that property line. Is that accurate?
In terms of the layout that I, well, I'll start with the last part and sort of move backwards. In terms of the layout that I have seen, and then based on the requirements, the townhomes would be brought up towards the street. So based on the layouts that I've seen, and granted, this is a rezoning, not a site plan review, but based, the, the layouts I've seen, there would be a driveway closest to that western property line. So, so the, the zoning would require a build-to zone. Access locations would be limited to, to one access location. And so the, the buildings would be brought up closer to the street, so there would probably be a little bit more room to that property line. However, to your point, right, the, the requirement is a five-foot setback, so it could be built within five feet of that property line and it could be 35 feet on that property, five feet off the property line.
But to alleviate that, if we did the MNS, which would still allow the townhouse product, it would change the density units from 10 down to eight, but it's still roughly in that ballpark. But that would ensure that the setbacks are a little bit greater, right?
You have to, this is a, an urban context, though, not a suburban, so.
Oh, yeah, I, I understand the urban context, but I mean, you could, you don't have to keep the urban context on there. You could make it suburban because if we go to the comp plan, we could go to the lower-density residential, right? Wouldn't the suburban match that?
In either case, the side setback would be five feet.
But the rear, the rear would be 10.
The rear would be 10, but that, that property line that goes along the majority, let me, let's actually pull this up here. I don't think I'm on the right way. Yeah, let's use this one. So, so on this particular drawing, so this is a side property line by definition, and then this is a side property line. So that increased setback would apply to this property line and this property line, but, but not that one. So, so you're, you're right, it would have an effect on the, the rear setback, but the majority or the, sort of the length of the property, this would be a five-foot setback in, in any of the mixed-use zone districts.
Okay, and I apologize, I don't have two questions, I have three. Did we hear from either of those, and this may not be a fair question, I'm just wondering, if we, have we heard from either of those residents that live on either side of that who would be impacted by the setbacks?
So to answer your question, yes, we heard, I do recall hearing from the property owner to the south at the planning commission public hearing, and I think his main, main concern was over parking. And then there was conversation, and I don't know if it was this property owner immediately here, but there was, I think, a couple of folks over here that were, were possibly interested in future proposal for rezoning of their properties as well. So, so they weren't concerned about impacts, they were, they were interested in the zoning.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilor Harrison?
Thank you. I had two concerns. One would be, and, and I realize this is a rezone and not a site plan, so I'm going to ask kind of generic questions here, about how many units might be put on this? Because in one place, half-acre says, this whole property is half-acre, correct? And?
Yes.
Okay. And under the MRU, it says minimum would be 10 dwellings per acre. So do we have a guesstimate at this point about how many units? And I'm, I realize we're not officially doing a site plan, just trying to figure out how many cars, because, because where are we going to park them and where are the cars going to go? That's one of my issues.
Okay, thank you. So I'll sort of start with the, the density requirement. So if it's a 10 units per acre and it's a half an acre, then it would be five units. You probably all figured that out. And, and then in the initial sketches that I've seen, I've seen somewhere between 10 and 14 townhome units. And again, the units were brought up to the street, which would be required by the zoning, and then the, the driveway was behind the units.
Okay, let's do that one more time because I think I lost something here. When it says, under MRU, it says the minimum number, oh, minimum, okay, not maximum. Thank you. Never mind. Got it.
Okay. Councilor Gutwin?
Thank you. So I agree with what Councilor LaBiere said, that, you know, ownership opportunities are great. The city, you know, we, we hear a lot of need and demand for that. I do also have a question just related to the parking question. We are looking at updating our parking requirements. So the way this would work, because this is in a site plan and because they haven't filed, any changes that we make would still apply to this property until they've, unless they file ahead of time or ahead of our changes.
Correct. So the, the, when you're essentially vested for a particular set of zoning standards is when you submit the formal application for a site plan. And so they have not submitted a site plan to date. Now, if it's rezoned tonight and then they submit a site plan before the city council makes any changes to the zoning ordinance, then, then the current parking standards would apply. And, and then also don't forget that if you, if the city council adopts standards, there's also the time period after it's adopted.
Or noted.
Before it becomes effective.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Franks?
I guess where I want to go is that we obviously know from our community, they want to be able to buy things. I mean, we, we've heard that. And we've also heard, at least from a lot of people, that they want, you know, lower-density with the townhomes would achieve. But we're, that's not what we're voting on tonight. We're voting on MRU. And so if the owner of the property gets an amazing offer and we've already zoned MRU, I want to understand what the maximum thing can be on there. What, what can, what's the maximum thing to make sure that our Ward 2 folks, that's, because again, when I look at the two letters that came in support, they're talking about a townhome. I have no way to guarantee them. I can't leave them here tonight and say, you're going to get 10 townhomes. I'm, if I say yes, I'm zoning MRU and it's whatever that allows. And as we all know, from those who've watched this, I don't agree with the mixed-use, how it's handled. But again, long story short, what can be put there with MRU? I need to hear the maximum that can be put there to, to make sure I understand what I'm saying yes to, because that's regardless of what actually happens. That plan may not come together, financing may not come through, land gets sold, and now it's MRU. What can go there?
Thank, thank you for the question. So I'd like to answer it in, in two parts. The first part I'd like to answer in terms of commercial development and then I'd like to invite the architect, Eric Blais, to come up and, and address the, the multifamily part of it. So, so to your point, multifamily residential is a permitted use in the zone district and so, right, what, what's, what's the possibility? So I'm going to switch to a slide at the end here if I can. Okay. And I'm going to change to my notes. Okay. So, again, I'd like to do this in two parts, so I'm going to answer the commercial part of it. So in the MRU Zone District, it does allow for some commercial uses. And the way that the zoning ordinance is written, it's focused around neighborhood-serving commercial uses. And I appreciate the question because I really like the way the zoning standards apply to this particular site. So to consider the commercial potential for the site, I have an example. So, so please keep in mind that the site is not located on a corner with high-traffic volume, so there's, there's very little possibility that there would be commercial located on the site. But anyway, we're, I have that example. So with that in mind, the, the zoning ordinance limits the commercial use to 20% of the gross floor area. So to put that in perspective, the overall site is about a half an acre and the developable area minus the setbacks and the open, and, and having the open space requirement is about 18,000 square feet. So if a 3,000-square-foot restaurant is located on the site, the entire ground floor would have to be parking to support that. have to be parking to support that. And then it would have to have two full floors of residential above that to make the overall building area work so that that commercial part isn't more than 20%. So to, to put a commercial use on the site, again, that would have to be on the ground floor. The majority of the ground floor would have to be parking. And then two floors above that would have to be commercial. And so it would be a very significant building, a very expensive building, to do a pretty small amount of commercial. And then the 3,000 square feet, to put that in perspective, a big sit-down restaurant is probably closer to 5,000 square feet. And a coffee shop is usually a little bit less than 3,000 square feet. So if there was commercial on the site, it, it would most likely be a neighborhood-serving commercial. And it would be limited, and it would be very expensive. And, and the location, I don't think lends itself to that. And then if, with that, if I can invite Eric Blaze to come talk about multifamily development and sort of the dimensions of the property and, and other projects that you've worked on.
We've analyzed the site in, for the possibility of an apartment building, condominium-type building, or something of that nature. We have, over the past 10 years, have probably drawn several three-story apartment or condo buildings with level-one parking, where the entire ground level is, is taken up by parking. None of them have been economically viable over, over those analyses, because, which were restrict, were restricted to a three-story building because of the height restriction on this site. Because building that very expensive structure, as, as Stephen brought out, you have to have a lot of units to overcome the expense of that concrete structure on the first level. So we, we think that there's a very minimal chance for a three-story apartment building with all of the grade, a ground level being parking, working economically. The site doesn't allow for much more than a single bay of an apartment building, which would require the entire first floor to be parking, under, understructured parking, which would be a concrete structured podium. So we've, we've, we've seen over the, over the, you know, latest 10 years, that we've analyzed some of these three-story buildings, of very little success in a, in a three-story apartment building working. And that's why we think that, you know, the, the density and, and size of the project is, is really going to realistically be limited to something that is small and low-density to allow for suitable parking for a small type of development as well.
Well, I appreciate that. But again, you may not be the owner, you may not be the, again, I have to look at it as agnostic. It can't be who owns it, what they're planning on doing. It has to be what I'm saying that property can, can do. And so when I look at that, I say, okay, can it be like they may be doing at the point, underground parking, three-level structure, you know, smaller area? And it can also be rentals. Again, I'm not saying that's your project, but that's not what I'm being asked to do. I have been schooled over three years of being on council to disregard the project. And as amazing as it would sound, unless I can get deed-level restrictions onto something, then it becomes for me, what am I saying potentially yes to? And I certainly want to defer to a large degree to our Ward II counselors. But I just, it has to be clear that we go in full eyes open. That can be up to X, and it doesn't mean it's going to be for sale, and it doesn't mean it's going to be townhomes. It can be whatever that zoning allows. And so that's my key rub through the whole thing. And so I'd love a way to have deed restrictions, because the people who said they, they wanted the project, notice how they referenced the word "townhome." And, you know, people talked as owner-occupied. I can't guarantee that with, with my vote. And so it's nothing personal at all, but we're asked to disregard that and to pay attention to just what we're doing to the zoning, because then it affects property after property. And so that's what I'm more interested in. Thank you.
And the, the only thing that, you know, that, that we keep looking back at is that the significant limiting factor of this site is that it only has a 35-foot height restriction. So that severely restricts what you can build on the site for, for, for any developer and any kind of economical pro forma that could be built. So just, just wanted to point that out.
Counselor Abel?
I believe Ms. Franks's comments stem from a property that we rezoned for townhomes. I swore up and down it would be townhomes. And now it's up for sale for anything that can be used on, in that zoning. And the property is tripled in price. All they had, the only improvement on the property was our rezoning. It could be a club, a lodge, a daycare facility, a fitness or athletic facility, a private gallery or studio, an office, personal services location, a restaurant, retail, and such things as a community building. Those are permitted. With limited land use, it could be a contractor shop, stand-alone, alone parking, surface parking. And with special use, it could be an animal care facility. What Ms. Franks is saying is that when we approve this rezoning, we don't approve it for townhomes, we approve it for any of these uses. And we've been burned before. In your comments, you referred to material change that we expect to happen. Definition of material change is something that's already happened. And in fact, on page six of nine, just above this chart that you gave us, it says, "It could be argued that there has been a material change in the neighborhood." So none of that allows us to declare a change for material use, because it hadn't changed yet. So I'm concerned, as, as is Counselor Woman Franks, with what we might approve here and what it could wind up being. I also wonder why there's no transition between the existing apartment house next door and this, the only thing that's there is the street. There's no real transition between that apartment house and this, the way it's currently zoned. What's the transition going to look like when we zone this and the folks next door? Anyway. Concerns me that schools haven't commented. That's rare. We, at one time, the schools would endorse every new project we brought along. And then along about the time of the Hutchinson-Green Mountain dust-up, there was a thing over at Mole Home, and they were neutral on that. Now they are not even issuing an opinion, and it concerns me that we haven't heard from them. 10, 12 units shouldn't add a lot to the school's load there, but I would like to know what they think. Also, if it was RMF, it would require more open space. There's a smaller setbacks, where are they going to, if it does become townhomes, where are they going to walk their dogs? So I haven't seen these statements from the neighborhood that they support this. There were some comments, I believe, before the planning commission that they do. So I'm, I would like to be persuaded, I suppose, is what I'm saying. And nothing I've heard yet has persuaded me. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. As I was reading through this today, I too have some thoughts on it and some concerns, really. The issue's been brought up about parking, but it, it's really not resolved at this point, how, what, what's been stated regarding the number of 10 to 14 units, how that could be accommodated. And frankly, we're going a little slow on our development dialogue. I have no idea when we're going to get to the parking. And so I, I'm not comfortable with that piece. There were concerns raised in the documents that I saw. One of them was the architecture, and concern is if it fit in with the neighbor or the community character. Has that been resolved? I don't know. Also, the neighbors to the west, those are single-family homes, correct? And it was unclear to me just what their input was on this project. Steve, can you address that at all?
Yes, in terms of the, the neighbors to the west, there was a, a neighborhood meeting that was held, and we received feedback at the neighborhood meeting. I don't know, I, I can't match exactly people who attended with people and their exact locations. But, but there were neighbors there, so they received the notification. And then at the public hearing, there were also neighbors there. And there was one neighbor who lived to the west of the proposed rezoning, and she was generally in support of the rezoning.
Okay. At one point, it was mentioned in some of the documents we got regarding access. Has that actually been satisfactorily resolved?
Access for the site is, is indicated here on this diagram with the arrow. And that's the access location that would meet the transportation standards.
And that is one single access?
Correct.
Okay, because that was one concern that was, was brought out in some of the documents. I did notice a letter in, in our material that we received, but the lady does not live that close by, frankly. And as you showed on your diagram with the star, this is really very much on the edge of, of the green area. And it is setting precedent that you would be going in a direction with this kind of, of development outside of that, the area there, the higher density. I'm not real comfortable with that. I would like to really support the questions that Counselor Franks offered, that when we vote for something, we're voting for a, a zoning change. And we really don't for sure know what's going to go on there. And to back up Counselor Abel, we've gotten burned in, in Ward One over this, big time. 10 to 14 units on a half an acre seems to me to be a very large increase in density on this, in this area. I guess you don't do traffic impact studies because it's close to the light rail? Or how does that work, Steve?
Typically, the transportation department will decide at the time of the pre-planning letter, when a traffic study is required for a particular development. In most cases, it's based on the type of development and the anticipated traffic.
Thank you. That actually kind of backs up Counselor Frank's point, that we don't really know what's going to go on there, right? What about water and sewer? Has that been satisfactorily looked at?
In terms of, excuse me, water and sewer, referrals were sent with the rezoning application. No objections were received from water and sewer providers, but the details of those are worked out when there's an actual site plan application with specific units proposed.
Just because, for me, a very strong value is to do unto others. I am wondering about the property values of the people that are in the homes that are right next to this. Would you please respond to that?
I, I can't speak to property values. That's not one of the review criteria.
Kind of outside the scope of what's before us.
Okay.
So if, I mean, if the applicant wants to...
Can she speak?
Yes, please.
I'd like to speak to that, too.
Know who you are.
If you don't mind, real quick, I mean, that property right there used to be a burned-down house with, you know, people living in it, and it was boarded up. So I think this is probably an improvement from where it was. Just going to throw that out there.
I'm Lori Abbey, and I am the owner of Remax Urban Properties and also his real estate agent. And so some of the things that you were asking about, I can not answer definitively, certainly. But these guys are in the business of obviously making money. And so when you look at the site, you look at the size, and you look at the price per square foot, you're going to look at the best use of the property. And so in looking at it, that was, the best use was the townhomes, the going up the three stories and the price per square foot that you can get. But back to your question about whether or not, what it does to the values around, and certainly, obviously, because there have been homeless people living in it, and it was boarded up, and, and it was in pretty rough shape, and I believe there were some drug deals going on. It's, just simply tearing that down is going to improve it. But what I have seen in these areas where they build the townhomes, the property values, the price per square foot of all the property around it goes up, so it's actually beneficial. Another beneficial, one of the things that we heard a lot at the, the city planner meeting was about the fact that there's no sidewalk, and everybody's having to walk over to the light rail station. And so they were saying they aren't going to be able to get to the sidewalk for quite some time. So the benefit is that in doing this, they have to build the sidewalk. And I understand that there is no guarantee that we do what, I mean, certainly, this is all we can do with it. And, and he didn't speak about this, but when we put the plan together, 10 to 12 townhomes fit on there very, very nicely with two-car garages for each of them. And I can't sell a property, when you're doing this, I can't sell a property like this at this relatively affordable price without a two-car garage. You simply can't do it. And it changes that the people that I'm selling these townhomes to all along the light rail are, are young, up-and-coming people who may have a car, but they don't use them. They are buying here so that they can get on the light rail and go to their places downtown. So I actually think it's a very desirable transitional audience and transitional group of people that are going into them. So again, you're right, I can't guarantee that there are not going to be three-story apartment buildings, but it doesn't make a lot of sense financially. I'm looking at another property in Bonnie Bray, and it's very difficult to make that work, as you said, unless it gets five to seven stories. And so I, I don't see that happening, but certainly can't guarantee that someone won't do it. But if you're looking at highest and best use of the land, this is the best price per square foot for, for the land. Do you have any questions on anything other than that? But yes, it does increase the property values around it, always.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Counselor Gutwin?
I'm not done. I appreciate your comments, but I still have some real concerns about what we're doing here.
So now you're done? Okay. Counselor Gutwin?
Thank you. Could you, it may be just because it's late, but could you walk me through again the, why it would require parking on the ground floor if you did apartments? Is it because of the number of parking spaces that, yeah?
Because of our requirements.
I think I got it, but why don't you just walk through it one more time?
We're required to provide a certain number of parking spaces per unit. So if we're to do, right now, the, the plan that we've, we've drawn, we've drawn several plans, but the plan that, that Anthony thinks works best, best for the site... the plan that Anthony thinks works best for the site is townhomes with, as Lori brought out, two-car garages in the back of them and living space in the front and a driveway behind it. With that scheme that we've had, the ten to twelve townhomes, the site is essentially maxed out for parking. We can't find any, you know, any more parking spaces besides those two-car garages plus a couple of spaces for visitors. So if we were to provide any more units than that, we'd have a really hard time finding parking for it, and so therefore, it's hard to imagine creating a building that has more units than that. And the only way to go is below grade, which is extremely expensive construction. The one-level structure, the at-grade level structured parking is very expensive, but then going below grade is double, triple that cost, and then to try to make that limited number of units overcome that cost of the structured parking would be very difficult, if not impossible, for a developer to overcome that cost. So that's, I don't know if that answers your question.
That does, and I think that, you know, in the work that we've done here, I have learned that parking structures can be cost prohibitive except on very large projects. I mean, we've only seen a handful of those in Lakewood. One is that the Whole Foods, and that's an enormous project, and anyway. That does answer my question, and I think that what I'm getting at here to counsel is that I definitely agree, and we have had a case where someone purchased a property and they rezoned, and then it didn't end up being, you know, they sold again. And so there are no guarantees, and I certainly appreciate that, and, you know, what we heard from the community is that they want townhomes, and none of us can guarantee that it's going to be townhomes. But we also, it's also not fair to take the other extreme and say that there are no guarantees, and this can be absolutely anything. I mean, we're talking, there are some pretty significant constraints on this property with the size and all of the other things that we're talking about. So what I'm hearing is the most that it could be is a three-story apartment building with ground-floor parking, which is essentially impossible financially.
We've drawn several of them over the years in even stronger markets that have not been economically feasible, three-story apartment buildings with level-one parking, correct?
So it's, okay, so instead of impossible, economically not feasible to do. So that is giving me a better level of comfort in looking at doing this, and especially given the community support, and it being in the growth area and the townhome opportunity. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, there aren't guarantees, and I think that this does fit in line with the goals outlined in the plan for growth in this area, and we have seen support. I do feel more comfortable, given those additional constraints that are not in the zoning, but that are because of this lot, so.
Counselor Harrison?
Thank you. One of the things that, when we go back to the screen that talked about the comprehensive plan, and it shows all the purple, this particular property is what the comprehensive plan, what we've talked about for a growth area, I realize this particular piece of property is right on the very edge of considered lower density, but I would agree with Counselor Gutwin. When you look at what could be built there, and what the community has continued to tell us, is that they want owned homes there, we'll call them townhomes, but ownership. I think that's very important, and I would really like to defer to Councillors LeBure and Vincent. It's their wards, and I hear that they kind of support this. The neighborhood is supporting, and all of us have been sitting here for a really long time, and there hasn't been one single person show up at this dais saying they're opposed to it, and they know about it. So it kind of feels like when we get that kind of support from the neighbor, or lack of opposition might be perceived as support, okay, would be the way I would say it, I think we've got to go with it, folks. I think this is a great use of space, and with parking being addressed, and I'm going to, I'm going to count on you doing that, okay? To put parking there, I think that's, that closes the deal for me. Thank you.
Okay. So we've, we heard something, there was a mention about transitions, and currently it's a multifamily just straight to single-family, and this would actually create more of that transition from townhome to single-family.
Correct.
You're correct. And while we're currently potentially rezoning to a list of uses, it's a burned-out shack currently that could accept a lot of different uses, that could still serve the neighborhood. Doug Alonowitz's project is near this, and that's kind of similar as far as density is. How many, do you know off the top of your head, how many he has on his acreage? Because those are pretty compact homes as well. The Westline Village.
Right, so Westline Village, I think their density is as high, it's in the upper twenties in terms of units per acre.
So this is, this is pretty comparable to that, in that. And then I would just say, you know, this is a very active community, and for them not to be here tonight in opposition, I think does speak volumes. I think we all see Mattie Nichols and Kathy Hassfield and WCCA rally, and if they were against it like they had been with some other projects in that neighborhood, I imagine we'd see them tonight. So those are just some observations that I've had, and there's a comment about being burned, and I don't know if I feel burned. I certainly understand, you know, land use is not perfect. We're not building a city on a video game where one person gets to decide just this and that. I mean, you do have an arrange, a wide arrangement of things that can happen, and you really have to weigh that, is all that best and highest use, or does it need to remain the same? Counselor Vincent?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments, and that is, is that I was at some of those meetings, and the neighborhood is very supportive of this because of the transition. And you are correct that they're active, and they will hold your feet to the fire, and they very much want to be involved in the design, which I think they've made well-known. Unfortunately, you have been held captive by something that was probably not done correctly across the street, and that is the parking situation. We have a high-density apartment that's market rate, very nicely done. The neighborhood did a good job, I think, of questioning what was those parking requirements, and they were told that there would be plenty. The thing that was a failure maybe to ask is, were you going to charge for those parking places? So if you're charged for a parking place, guess where people are going to park? They're not going to do it. So shame on us. So I hope that's something that's kind of addressed when the committee goes and reviews parking, because what's promised is what should be, what should be done. I'm very, very familiar, I walk by this all the time to the park, et cetera, and this is an unusual-shaped piece of property, so I can't see it being laid out for much else. So because, because the folks are supportive of this, I'm also supportive of it, too. I do like the idea of a transition because it's kind of stark, if you ever go by it, a four-story apartment building and then a single-family dwelling. And they are very appreciative of the sidewalks. I will say, though, that I am going to start reviewing this because it's almost like I feel that our neighborhood is being held hostage for certain things. If we give you a sidewalk, will you do this for us? So I'm just going to throw out there, I'm not going to have them continue being held hostage so they can get a block of sidewalk. I will be supporting this project. I will be watching it, and to your, to some of these people's points, if this doesn't end up being what it's going to be, or what's being stated, it will be very rough getting anything else in this particular neighborhood, so, thank you.
So I have Counselor Bida, and then LeBure, Franks, Abel, and Skilling.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with all the comments that have been made in favor of this. Looking at this on balance, there's not, it's never perfect, there's always going to be issues, there's always questions, there's no guarantees in life, and then there's no guarantees on this, but based upon the information that we have in front of us, I can't see any reason to turn this down, so I'm going to vote in favor of it, and I'm ready to call the question anytime.
There's a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion, so please cast your votes to call the question. So that passes seven ayes, four nays, and that fails for a lack of a supermajority. Am I missing something?
Eight votes would be needed.
Yep. I know, I know a little bit about my Roberts rules, bless you. Okay, so, I appreciate that gesture. Counselor Bida, I sure do appreciate that. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So there was a motion to call the question, not to vote on your project. So to call the question, which would take a supermajority of council, that failed, so we're still discussing the project at hand. Okay, sorry. Okay. Who did I have? I had Counselor LeBure, Franks, Abel, and Skilling, and Royball.
Can you just explain the open space requirement for me? Like, what does that look like? It's twenty percent, I don't, I have a hard time getting a sense of how that looks geospatially.
In terms of open space, right, there's the twenty percent open space requirement of the way that we can count that, so that includes landscaped areas, but it also includes usable outdoor areas for pedestrians, so the motor court area will not count towards open space, the building footprints will not count towards open space, any outdoor usable areas, front yards, front yard sidewalks would count towards open space. So I would anticipate townhomes, assuming there's townhomes, but a project facing a street and then some, some green space in front of that.
And the building next door is five stories, right, not four?
Yes, I believe it's five.
Okay, because I think that was a little misstated, because one of my concerns with the five-story building next door is that I don't think anybody would build a single-family home next to a five-story building. So I do sort of get the transition element that seems to make sense of why, you know, there could be a benefit to rezoning in that sense. I'd also just say, frankly, Thirteenth is practically a one-way street. It can barely fit two cars, there's no sidewalks, we've had two people die on it last year, I think, from getting hit by cars, and it's, frankly, it's just not wide enough. And I do, I mean, people want to see this area developed, you know, regardless of the rezoning, but they want to see it developed because they want to see that road widened, and frankly, that would help alleviate some of the parking issues that's been caused by the apartment across the street, because when they widen the street, they'll allow for more on-street parking on Thirteenth, like the apartment has, that doesn't currently exist. So I see those as all added benefits, and the issue I have with no development ever happening there is none of those issues will get solved without some type of developments, and so I am worried about that. However, I, to Councilman Abel's point, you know, I have not looked at, I'm not the zoning expert, I didn't look at all the different zoning things that could have went there, and it seems to me you probably do want to have some sort of residential element to this property, and I do see the concern of a potential rogue commercial building being put there. However, you know, for the economic reasons, I have a hard time imagining anybody ever developing anything of a commercial element there, considering there isn't a whole lot of traffic, there's a whole lot of people that go down that street. So I don't know if you want to speak to a potential, you know, I don't know, office or personal service, I know we already kind of had that discussion a little bit, but, and I guess, and the other point, with the current zoning is R16, is that right? So I mean, there are other things that could be there. I mean, somebody could put a wireless communication facility there, somebody could put a group home there, or a utility facility there, and for the limited land use, somebody could do a small animal area, community garden, I mean, religious institution, so I know Councilman Abel mentioned some other things that could have been there with the change zoning, but that's also true of the current zoning, so I don't know if anybody wants to.
To reiterate what Mr. Wilson said earlier, standalone commercial is not permitted on this site. Makes use residential requires residential, and so commercials only allowed as an accessory to a residential, but like, so if this were a site that could fit a multi-level residential building on it, they could have commercial on the ground floor, but it's not, it can't hold a multifamily, so there's, there's really no practical way that commercial could happen here, and it certainly isn't allowed as a standalone use.
Okay, got it. So that's ancillary, or is that the right term?
Well, in fact, that, at your last hearing, that's one of the changes that was, or your last study session, that's one of the changes that was in the development dialogue. The permitted use, list use in multifamily residential doesn't accurately reflect the requirements in the zone, so the code has requirements that limit the commercial, it's not reflected properly in the table, and you've, as a group, have proposed changing that.
Okay. And are you only allowed one street cut, or can there be fifty street cuts there? I'm just curious.
To your question, so for townhomes, the way that the transportation standards would apply is it would be one curb cut. If there was single-family or duplex, then it could be for every lot.
Okay. And then there's no transition requirement on the west side of the property? There's no transition requirement for the different zoning spots, or what does that look like?
Yeah, there is a, both a height and design transition zone, so where you go to the, let's see if I can get that, pull that up. Where you go to the, these western property lines, so as a seventy-five-foot offset of that, it's limited to thirty-five feet in height, and so that effectively limits the entire property to thirty-five feet in height. So again, that's where the mixed use is next to the single-family zoning with single-family uses, that height is limited to thirty-five feet.
Okay. I just want to make sure I had that clear. I think that's all we have. Thanks.
Mr. Cox?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just because Counselor Franks raised this issue a little while ago, and there's been several references to it, but we haven't really addressed the point that she made, which is of course true, that when you're dealing with a straight-zone district, you know, we used to do this little preview, a little primer on rezonings, we didn't do that this time, but a couple of the key points, when you're dealing with a rezoning to a straight-zone district, which doesn't, that's not talking about mixed use versus single uses, it's just, here's a zone district, here's the designation, here are the permitted uses. The question before you is, would that zone district, as represented by the list of uses that are available, the standards that would apply, the dimensions and density that would be part of that, is that going to be compatible with the surrounding area? And is it going to be furthering the goals of the comprehensive plan, whatever uses come out of that? And it may be hard to visualize what you're going to get, but you know that it's within that box of uses that you're considering, and if you find that the compatibility and the conformance of the comp plan is there, you can approve that, knowing that whatever's built will be built. The flip side of that is when planning, when planned developments, we're all the rage, and people would come in with fully drawn-out plans of, I'm going to build this three-hundred-and-eighty-bed assisted-living facility, it's going to be painted yellow and have Victorian elements, and, you know, daffodils in the front yard. People were evaluating it by the details of the proposal, instead of this is what would be allowed there under, under the zoning. So I just wanted the record to reflect that, in fact, that's the correct standard, is you're looking at whether this zone district and the uses it allows would fit in with the neighborhood, whatever item was lifted off that list. Hope that helps.
And that segues into Counselor Franks. And that segues into Counselor Franks.
Ever so nicely. I will keep these points brief. And really, this is more for just the overall education as these come forward. So let me log back in here. I did want to speak to the fact, that the fact that we don't have a large number of people from the community saying, no, 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 that is a good thing. So I really want you to hear that that's a good thing. But over time, what I've come to know is, that doesn't usually tell the whole story. We don't know what those people took away from that. If they took away townhomes and ownership, and I'm good, they may not really know what's possible. And I know what you're intending to do, and that's all well and good. But again, it's good to see that there's not a bunch of people out here saying, no, no, no. But I don't know how many knew what could come and what will come. So I think that's just one thing. The other thing that we are required to just look at this individual one. But I do like to make sure people know that, you know, Mr. Wilson mentioned earlier, that the property owners to the west kind of said, maybe they might want to do some rezoning. So that does not necessarily mean that, and again, I know we're talking about this property, but I'm just trying to make sure everybody understands. But if the two properties to the west are also acquired, and it becomes a big thing, then Ward Two folks have to know what you are saying something to. And again, you know, I want to be really clear about that. I try to think through, and when you said that they had already suggested an interest right there, that at least should be to the Ward Two folks, to be kind of saying, what does that mean for us? Because that zone creep, while it's now on the edge, could go to the next edge, and the next edge, and that forth. So a question, though, that comes out of this is, are there any mechanisms either today, or that we could be looking at as a council going forward to actually narrow what's approved? Do we have any mechanisms that exist on the books today, or do we have anything that we may want to consider later? Not tonight, obviously. I'm trying to hurry up my point. But that would then say, we're approving these, this scope of uses, rather than this smorgasbord where, you know, frankly, I'll be off council, and, you know, I'm not going to be wondering, saying, hmm, did that turn into exactly what I thought it was going to turn into? So that was the core question.
I think the best solution would be additional zones that would allow what you want and not allow other things that you may, or the neighborhood may not want. A potential example would be an R1-0 zone, that would allow single-family units here, townhomes or otherwise, but not allow any commercial, not allow any multifamily. So.
Appreciate that. So that's just throwing out to council. And the very last thing is, what I'm going to say is, I am going to defer tonight to Ward Two. If Ward Two says that this is what Ward Two, it's the right thing. You know the area. You know that the land maybe already is in rough shape. I would just like to ask you maybe to remember that when a rezoning comes up in Ward Four, that it is important for the people who are most affected to be in the key decision. And I'm not joking there. I mean, I am being dead serious. It is important that when we, I'm deferring to you. You know your community. They will punish you at the ballot box if you choose to run again, if you aren't supporting them. So I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Duly noted. Thank you.
I think you're safe from rezonings in Ward Four. Just saying. Counselor Royball, then Abel, then Skilling.
Boy, thank you. Counselor Franks, I think you took a lot of my comments and questions, and I thank you for that. I too, just, I have a little reservation, and it's in the back of my mind. And I know that area very well, and I drive around the area, and I kind of see it. But the question now becomes, you know, we deal with the actual, you know, piece of property, and we look at the zoning, and that's it. And I get that. But in the back of my mind, with the city growing, I look at curb and gutter. You can't help but look at that. And then you look at the vehicles. And the vehicles are going to be parked all over the place. And, you know, we got to make accommodations for those vehicles somehow, some way, to keep them on the property. And I don't know how to do that. But to me, obtainable housing, I call it, not sustainable, but obtainable housing, to be able to afford, to have an average family, to be able to purchase a piece of property, I think it's gold for me. I will defer to my fellow counselors in Ward Two. I think they know their word better than the rest of us, or actually me. So I'm going to defer to Sharon and Jacob on this particular issue. So.
All right. Thank you, sir. Counselor Abel, Skilling, Johnson.
A lot of us have been raising issues tonight that are philosophical, and have to do more with the way we have changed how we do business with land use decisions. And we have these three poor people sitting over here as we approach Tuesday, and they're kind of held hostage to our pontification. Also, the folks at Two Creeks have always showed up when they were in support of something. They're that vocal. I think tonight, they got to look at our 17-item agenda and said, no way in heck are we going to show up tonight. So I don't want to read anything into their absence. I don't like the way this, we have these nebulous menus, but I do, I think that we should not hold anyone hostage with their property rights, because we have what might not be the best way to handle land use issues. So I'll defer to Sharon. I'm still thinking about whether I want to defer to Jacob or not, but I will be supporting the rezoning.
Counselor Skilling?
I'm happy to hear that this council's turning over a new leaf, because I don't remember the same type of deference when it came to Ward Four, but maybe I was in a different meeting. I was going to point out, but it's already been raised. But there was one of the folks that the mayor even mentioned, wrote an email, talking, and this is what I mentioned in my first comments, about that MRU would give way too much leeway to the developer, that that was, there was nothing, she even said, there's nothing in between the two types of developments. That seems to be where the consternation is. It seems like everybody wants the same thing. We just, we don't have the mechanism to get there. And then we've been burned by other projects. I don't know if that's R1-0, or if it's a new type of zone. We call it transition zone, that has just a limited, I don't know what you call it. Maybe we'll start a committee and talk more about it.
I was going to say, sounds like a new committee item.
But I think that that was even recognized, and I think she's a Two Creeks board, so I think they even recognized what I was saying earlier about, you know, MRU gives a ton of leeway, but, you know, there's no other option. So that's something that should probably be addressed.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. You've all brought such good points to the table, and I appreciate hearing all of your reasons why you're going to be voting a certain way, or supportive or not supportive. I love the idea that this is owner-occupied. That's, we hear that all the time. And the density, for me, is a concern. I grew up not that far from this area. I'm very familiar with it. And when Counselor Abel brought up the one project that we voted on for a rezone, the people, when they came here, were extremely sincere. And they had two letters, I believe, of support with neighbors that had signed it. It all seemed so, so practical and honorable, frankly. And it didn't turn out that way. I do have a question. It sounded like on the west side, that based on this, Stephen, there would only need to be a five-foot setback from the adjacent property?
That's correct.
So the building would be five feet from the property line?
It could be. What I've seen proposed is, the building is pushed towards the other front lot line. But yes, it could be five feet from that property line.
And we're looking at a building that is two, three stories high, perhaps?
Correct.
Okay. I would love to defer to my wardmates in Ward Two, because I appreciate your sensitivity to your constituents and to the area. But frankly, I am very concerned about zone creep. And the star is basically the way that I look at it, outside of that area. And once you start down that road, it just keeps going on and on. I want to vote yes, and I'd very much like to support what you're doing, but I can't. I'm sorry. We've been burned. It could go any way. There are no guarantees with this. And I just can't have my name attached to it if things go wrong. That's happened one other time. I'm sorry.
Counselor Vincent?
Just a quick comment, and that is, is that I do, well, a couple of things. I agree with what this council is saying, and being supportive of the area. But this is a real issue. And that's what I was trying to bring up at the beginning, when I said, okay, we look at a material change toward the east, but we didn't look at how that affected the west, because we just were dealing with one side that was five stories, not this is now going into one story, because it is an issue as you go through. And then this is just a compliment for you all. Thank you for ripping down what was there. It was horrible. And I know you didn't have to do that before this rezoning was even done, but it was burned-out buildings. It was awful. I think we can agree. So I do appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
All right. So that exhausts the questions and comments. There's a motion in a second. I ask that you please cast your votes. Counselor Vincent, did you want to vote? Counselor Johnson, did you want to vote? Could you please vote yes? Thank you. All right. That passes 10 ayes, one nay. So congratulations. I'll wait to clear those. Did you get a picture? Okay, go ahead. Okay. Great. Okay. All right. So we're only an hour and 10 minutes behind schedule. We still have two more, two more issues, so general discussion. And I will defer to the council members, but what I'd like to stress to council is, this is not the place to debate what the requests are. The request is to say, do you want to do something going forward, which would be, I think, both a study session. And so Counselor Franks, I'm going to actually start with you. And might I also suggest that if council does want to see this go forward, we could time that potentially with Mr. Cox's review, which is scheduled for March or April. So that way, the audit could be done, and then flow into the review time.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Per our process, where we, as city council, we submit items for consideration to the council, I would like to submit a request for an audit, followed by a study session, to determine the benefits of proceeding with an in-house, i.e. staff, city attorney, versus continuing the current practice of outsourcing the delivery of legal services to the city and city council, with the goal being to ensure that the model best serves the interests and needs of both. And where that would go would be to get an audit of both the depth and breadth of the legal work that's currently being done, to understand the financial implications associated with that work. What does it cost us for that work to be done? With the potential outcomes, to do nothing, to leave it exactly as it is, that's one potential outcome. The other one would be to bring a city attorney functions in-house, it would be a city employee, or a blend of the two. And really, what I'm asking for is just the consideration of those things, once we have all the data points.
Counselor Gutwin?
I just have a question. If this kind of analysis, or something similar, was done when we were deciding, we, meaning the previous council, I guess, that went with this current existing method, to compare the cost of in-house versus outsourcing, was that taken into account? I don't know who to ask. Sorry.
So I actually would think this would be part of the whole historical research at the study session.
Okay. That's great. Thanks.
Counselor Bida?
Yes, I think it's a good idea to do this. I'm in agreement. It's been a number of years since we've reviewed our practices on hiring our legal counsel. And just to make it clear, this has no implications at all as to our current council. It's just really a matter of looking at best practices going forward. I'm sure we could get some guidance from the CML as well, in terms of the size of city we have. I think it makes sense, when you're a small town and stuff, to have an outside council on a contract basis. But there's got to be a point, when you get a certain size city, where that may no longer make sense. And so we just need to take a look at that. I think it's just a matter of good, good practice in going forward.
Counselor Abel?
I think as part of our fiduciary duty, we need to compare the cost-benefit and other data points, as Counselor Franks calls them, including efficiencies and that sort of thing. So I'll support it.
Counsel Harrison?
Thank you. It's an interesting idea. Who would do the audit? I mean, is it, what firm would be doing it?
An audit would be gathering the data points. So the city attorney's office knows what types of, what classifications of things come through, the numbers of them. They should already be tracking this. I know that we were getting, possibly getting more updated reports, knows what, you know, average litigation. So I would think that those would be numbers that we could gather internally. But again, I didn't have the, again, there are data points that should be being captured. We should know how many municipal, how much municipal support's needed, how much for, you know, us being sued for various things, how much, you know, outside counsel, how much special counsel we already have to do. Those would all be data points that we would do. So it's data gathering. I don't know that you're talking about a third-party auditor, per se. It's literally just an internal audit. If I was being asked to audit my project, I would be able to provide all the data points for my project.
So you're asking that Tim would actually be pulling all of this, or would it come from staff?
So I can help here. So it would be a coordination of data. It would be information from the finance department, in terms of payment of bills, as well as our HR department, in terms of the staffing levels. When it comes to outside information, as Counselor Bida spoke of, we would have a staff person do some of that inquiry, to see how it's handled, you know, what CML has gathered, in terms of the different models of provisions of city attorneys. And, yeah. And then our city attorney would need to provide an overview of all of the work that they actually do. Remember, it extends into the courts, with the prosecution staff, and into the police department, because we have an attorney assigned specifically to the police department, et cetera. It is also our city attorney's responsibility to dispatch, for lack of a better term, to hire experts. As you've met this evening, we got to hear from Mark Gruskin, who is an expert in elections. You've heard from various other, depending on what the needs of the city, what the needs are. And I was around when we shifted to that model, and it was, it really had a lot to do with cost savings. But we can go further into that detail and give you that history. The idea being, we don't, like, some cities have a whole The idea being we don't, like, some, some cities have a whole battalion of attorneys on staff that specialize in the different areas. Our model has always been lean and mean. And so we wait until we have an issue like the campaign, the campaign finance overhaul, if you will, to bring in Mark Gruskin. There are other attorneys who work with you on special districts and other, I mean, there's all kinds, water law, employment law, et cetera. So I think our city attorney would, would best be able to describe what that's been over time, not to mention the whole, all the litigation that we've been involved in as well.
Thank you. Counselor Labear?
I guess one of my concerns is just that we have such a limited amount of study sessions. And I think a lot of us believe that we should or could have a pretty ambitious year ahead of us, whether it's on environmental issues, or whether it's on, you know, development, or all the other things that we've been discussing. So my concern is using up a study session for this, especially when it seems like some of the, the points in here would have dovetailed pretty well with the budget, budget discussions, or even the review process. So I'm not sure if any of these, you know, if we can align any of those things, just to sort of not be redundant. But to me, that's what I would prefer. So I just want to mention that. Thanks.
And for that sake, that's why the suggestion was made that this would dovetail into the review period coming up here in a couple of months. Ms. Hudson?
So the, the work that I just outlined is gonna, is gonna take some time and some staff resources. My only concern about dovetailing this with review is timing. I believe in the policies and procedures that was established to be in the month of March. That's, that's pretty soon.
Okay.
So just-
I had thought it was May. My apologies.
Oh, it is before May? Oh, thank you. I'm, I am, I'm incorrect. So maybe that does buy us some time. If it is May, that's a couple more months. I had thought it was March.
Counselor Gutwin? And I guess if we can't get it, we can't get it by then. Counselor Gutwin?
Thank you. So I would definitely, I, I think that what Ms. Hodgson mentioned was, is really important part of this discussion about, you know, in the last year or two years, we did the campaign finance overhaul, and then we also did the workplace harassment, which we also had kind of a special access to, you know, some of the experts in the field. And so if we're going to go down this comparison, I would just want to make sure that somehow that's accounted for, that we can look at that, the cost of doing that, you know, just making sure that that's included in the analysis. And then I also agree with Counselor Labear in terms of, we have a full agenda. I'm not sure, I, I certainly think that we need to do our fiduciary responsibility and make sure that we're doing the, the best that we can. But I'm hearing that there's not actual concerns about what we're doing, or, or, there's no issues that have been mentioned. And so I just am wanting to see how this is going to fit in with all of our other priorities.
Counselor Vincent?
I'm throwing this out. Is it possible to talk about these two things in our yearly planning meeting? Retreat? Yeah. I mean, that's in a week and a half, so could we bring that up as one of the action items? There's two items, yours and Counselor-
So let's not have any sidebar right now.
Okay, I thought it was prioritizing. We were looking at that. So that, that was my concern.
Okay. So again, this is just, this is the request to, to move this forward. I, I certainly, I, I think we went through a review, and, and nothing like this was brought up last year at Mr. Cox's review. And we certainly have a fiduciary responsibility. But again, I'm not quite understanding where the concerns are, are coming from. But I, and I think it's probably somewhat painful for you, Mr. Cox, to be part of this conversation. So that's super unfortunate. But in my tenure, I think we've been very well served by our city attorney, and that's been a long time. And it's been tenfold the workload that's been added on with different projects. And, and again, I think it's important, and I remind council that, much like our city manager or anything we do, we do this as a body. And so there's been instances where council members have been directing our city attorney, and that needs to come from the body as a whole. And I just want to reemphasize that to council, that if there's going to be direction given to Mr. Cox, it needs to come from the body. So I don't support this at this time, and that's just my opinion. Thanks. Mr. Skilling?
I would only add that I don't think you need an entire study session. I think that as part of a review, if that's the way that it goes, you could see that in a review process, you would be talking about several options. One option would be, well, and I've raised this before, it's not the first time, because I was surprised that Mr. Cox wasn't our in-house attorney, that he was actually an outside attorney, because as Mr. Bita said, it does make sense when you're a smaller municipality, that you don't want to pay a bunch of money to an attorney who's going to play solitaire all day, because you have 100 residents. But we have 155,000 residents, and we've grown a lot since that time. And so I think it's just understanding, is it better to have in-house counsel, similar to that? We have our city managers in-house, Mr. Goldstein's in-house, and so those are employees of the city. And so when we talk in a review session of, well, is this something we need to look at, we should be armed with information. And I don't think it's that perilous of a task. I understand that the auditing will take time, but a study session, understanding pros, cons, best practices, what other cities do, benefit of in-house versus the current model, all of those things, I don't think is that, shouldn't take an entire study session, unless you've got electric scooter fleets on deck. Then maybe we'll struggle for time. But otherwise, I think it's actually something we need to have in going into a review. My two cents.
Counselor Bita? Counselor Franks?
I just wanted to speak to Counselor Gutwin's point that, yes, it does not preclude us from finding specialized counsel. There's no in-house attorney that could ever be skilled in all of the different things. It just pulls the, if we were to change the model, it becomes an employee who's then coordinating and searching for those. I wanted to clarify, certainly no one can, the breadth of law, no one could have that. We do go out to get specialists where, where we need to. So that all has to be factored in. That certainly wouldn't go away.
So if there's a, if there's consensus, then if it's not doable to have the audit finished by, by the review timeframe, then does, would council change the review timeframe, or? Okay. Counselor Gutwin? I have no idea what's involved. And I, and I'm sorry, I had a sidebar. I have no idea what's involved, first off. There was a comment that there should be no problem. But we're still working on projects from last year, and we haven't even done our planning retreat. There should be weight against the dashboard to see where this fits. So I don't want to just say, well, it should be done. I, we have a lot of priorities. So Counselor Gutwin?
To that point, I, I wonder if there's a way that we could maybe simplify some of this and look at, say, you know, I, I've heard a lot about this, just comparing to other municipalities about, is it better to have in-house versus outsourced, and look at the pros and cons? I wonder if we could just, and maybe CML even already has some information about that already done? If we could maybe just simplify it a little bit, so that it's not so taxing on staff and so much time, just in light of all of the other priorities? I think that's my biggest concern. And I apologize, I'm getting a little bit tired, so I think I'm talking a little slower.
So, so let's try to come to some sort of consensus, please. Counselor Abel, then Counselor Franks?
I don't see tying this to Tim, to Mr. Cox's review. We're not looking at Mr. Cox's performance. I don't think that's what Ms. Franks is proposing. We're looking at the concept of an in-house attorney versus a contract attorney. So I don't even know why we would tie it to his review. This is not about Mr. Cox. This is about the concept. I think, I think too many people are trying to make this personal.
Mr. Labear?
Well, when I heard it, I didn't hear compare and contrast. I heard audit. That made me think we're auditing what you do, which seems to me have some sort of equation of performance and cost, and that seemed to me to go along with your performance review and/or the budget. So that's, that's my thinking on that, but, so, thanks.
Okay. You've heard the, the proposal, you've read it. So is there consensus then on council? So I need to get a- Okay, so I see no's and, and yes. Normally, we don't take votes, so. One, two, three, four, five, six. So, yep, that's consensus. We'll move forward with that. Counselor Abel? I'm sorry, Ms. Hudson?
Just for clarification, we'll move forward with-
Sorry, the proposal to do the audit.
And the studies, which will be communicated in a study session, but that's the format. Okay.
Yep. Good. Counselor Abel?
Again, this is not tied to one specific initiative or referendum, although we can use one that is now in existence to show the outrageousness of what, of how we handle these things. At present, a judge has determined that their, the protest against Ms. Greer's decision declaring the initiative to be sufficient, has been held up by what a judge said was a meritless complaint. He even said it wasn't cognizant, which means part of that complaint didn't even belong in a court of law. Now, our ordinance says that the, watch, that, that these things cannot move forward if there is any legal action going on. That's the inference. And actually, it's, it is tied directly by the language to the decision of the city clerk. The city clerk's decision is no longer part of any appeal. The judge's decision is part of an appeal, and our ordinance does not currently address the judge's decision. So one could argue that it shouldn't be held up now. However, just to make sure things are handled properly, I propose that we strike from our ordinance, repeal and react, reenact Lakewood Municipal Code 2.52.100, 2.52.160, and 2.52.110B, and adding language ensuring the revised ordinance applies to all pending and future initiative and referenda. One of the concerns that this raises is it may not be constitutional. There are only, as far as I know, two cities in the state of Colorado that do, that hold their initiative and referenda off the ballot, as long as any appeal, no matter how well-grounded or not it may be. Us and our ballot. We seem to have these twin ordinances going around quite a bit. Why would we continue to allow something that is meritless, or something that may be meritless, to hold up the constitutional right to direct democracy and prevent our citizens from voting? This does not preclude someone from going to court and saying, "Your honor, this is wrong on the face of it, and here's my case." And if a judge finds there is a possible merit to the case, possible reason that this case might prevail, then he can, he can issue an injunction. The city has paid no ma, I don't know how many tens of thousands of dollars to defend Ms. Greer's decision against what the judge, again, has said is meritless. We don't want that to happen in future cases. Or at least, I don't. And Mr. Bita helped me put this together. He was, in large part, the co-author, and certainly our legal researcher. So we believe this will hold up to any court test. We believe it to be the right thing to do. And we believe that the existing ordinance doesn't even comply with the charter. Charter requires Ms. Greer to bring these to us within 30 days. It says nothing about appeals, holding it up. Later in that ordinance, it says, or in that charter provision, it says, "We can make ordinances to facilitate these, this requirement from charter, but we, it has to be consistent with the chapter." And merely by saying that Ms. Greer doesn't have to bring it to us within 30 days if a protest is filed, violates that charter provision. So I would urge my colleagues to, to grant our citizens right to direct democracy priority over someone's protest that may or may not hold legal water.
Okay. So with all due respect, Counselor Bita, I know you're the lawyer out of the U2. I have no idea where you pulled or got the language. So for me personally, I think if there's flaws with our whole ordinance, we should look at our whole thing and not just limit it to this, and really try to understand better our whole process. And that's how I think this would be better served. And I just still want to be cautious. We, we certainly always want to protect the rights of the folks who are petitioning, but you gotta, also, you can't forget, just because it could be one person who's protesting, that one person still has the right to protest. And that's what these bodies are here to try to protect, and not try to demonize or villainize one person who is utilizing the system as it's laid out for us. And that's what this body has to do. We have to protect both sides. But I, I think it certainly makes sense for us to look at this, but I think we should look at it a more holistic manner, and really, like you said, if there's other issues that are wrong with our process, let's clean the whole thing up.
May I address that? We just got through revising and replacing a campaign finance law that, in effect, does the same thing. It eliminates some sections and provides new sections, but we adopt, we didn't adopt, we didn't redo the whole thing.
You looked at the whole thing.
May I finish? I believe I have the floor, Mayor. The one person can still hold up the process if they have a decent case. The problem is, this guy didn't. And the judge found that to be the fact, that there was nothing in there that was a valid concern. So you're saying that someone who comes up with the most, with the, with the weakest argument possible, can hold up the right, the constitutional right to a citizen's initiated election that thousands of people signed petitions for? So one person with, with no case at all can delay that? No. One person can take their case to a judge and say, "Here's the case, Your Honor," One person can take their case to a judge and say, "Here's the case, Your Honor, and we would like an injunction to take it off the ballot." I would rather that person have to do that than thousands of Lakewood voters have to sit and twiddle their thumbs for years. Because we have an ordinance that doesn't comply with charter or likely the Colorado Constitution. That last statement comes from one of our outside attorneys that represented us in this case.
So, I'm not quite sure...
And it may not even be constitutional.
Where that's coming from, but anyways, Counselor Harrison?
Mr. Gruiskin said it in the September 27th...
All right. You no longer have the floor. Counselor Harrison has the floor.
Well, then, stay with the truth and the facts, Mr. Mayor.
Ten-four.
This... Your comment, Counselor Abel, was the fact that earlier in the campaign finance, we came through and replaced some stuff. The problem was... Or the... We had two workshops and two different readings on that particular campaign finance for us to come to the decision that we did tonight. It is midnight. My brain is shut off. If you ask me to vote on this right now, I'm gonna have to vote no. I would rather us be able to go through it. And I don't have any problem with addressing and going through this, but I want to learn more about it and what's in the charter and et cetera, et cetera, and get some other opinions on this.
All of this has been in front of you for five weeks.
Counselor Abel, you do not have the floor. Counselor Gutwin?
I think that what has happened with the growth initiative has been very emotional for our community, and I think it's highlighted some serious issues that we should thoughtfully address. And I think that the process that we went through with campaign finance was really good. And I think that I would like to really understand and get, again, you know, some input on how to make our process better. And, you know, I've also been hearing that we're one of the only cities that has a process like this, but... So, I think that we probably do need to make some changes. But I want to do it so... In a very thoughtful way that doesn't lead to unintended consequences down the road. Yeah.
Counselor Bida?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, yes, Counselor Abel is right. We spent a lot of time on this. Really, the point of the whole thing is this. The Constitution of Colorado, as well as our own city charter, gives the people the right to petition their government when they want something different than what we're doing. They have that absolute right. And so, that's under the charter. That's under the Colorado Constitution. And then, for some reason that I can't explain, somewhere along the line, an ordinance was passed, which takes that right away, which affects that right substantially. And we've seen that happen in this latest initiative. So, this isn't just about this initiative. It's really about the process and the concept and how we want our city to run in the future and whether or not we want to make sure that our citizens' right to petition the government is protected. Right now, it's not, obviously. And what this does basically, very simply, is it strikes some language out of the ordinance. There's nothing wrong with the scheme of the ordinance. The ordinance is fine, except for some specific language that's in there that needs to be stricken. And that's what we are proposing under this proposal. So, I just want to make sure we understand what we're talking about here. It's basically just an attempt to protect the rights of our citizens to petition their government. And keep in mind, the way... What's interesting is that in the normal course, and I can tell you this, having sat as a judge, the normal course is, a judge is not going in fear with an election. Okay? Because really, it's a moot issue until you see whether it passes, you know? So, there's no point in stopping the election. If we were talking about, was the bill constitutional? Is it gonna stand up legally? Well, you don't... Until the people pass it, it's... All it is is a discussion. It's not even a case in controversy. I'm not sure it even legally constitutes jurisdiction, because you don't really have a case in controversy until it's passed. If it's not passed, then it's a dead issue. And that's all we're saying here. By doing what we're proposing here, let it go to ballot. If it fails, we're done. If it passes, now let the courts challenge it and take your constitutional challenges or whatever going forward. So, it's... And that's how it's done in all the rest of the state of Colorado and most other states. For some reason, we have this peculiar provision in ours that's very odd, and it's taken away the rights of our citizens, so...
But I certainly appreciate that and support that 100%. I'm just trying to get a better understanding of the context and why we have this. What were the reasons? And to learn more about the ordinance, if there are other things we need to make. I mean, clearly, we've made it 50 years in our existence without having an issue. And for some reason, historically, this was put into place. And again, with all due respect, I have a hard time just adopting something tonight without even having our city attorney weigh in and giving us more context to the whole ordinance and to whether or not this is applicable to the current issue before us. So, I think, for me, I just need more opportunity for consultation with the experts in a more historical context to understand why we have this in our charter and why it's never been deemed unconstitutional or against our charter when we've had citizens' initiatives go through the process in the past. Counselor Franks?
I just wanted to weigh in. This is certainly an issue that's very close to my heart. My community, you know, basically had to go through the process of gathering thousands and thousands of signatures and then working with the city clerk's office, who did an exemplary job and no complaints there. But my concern is, this just keeps bump... Basically, what concerns me is, does the folks who have the deeper pockets, do they win based on this? I can't be agnostic on this one. It affected my community. The whole point was, we knew, we were... It was just, could we outlast them? Could we outlast their energy? Could we outlast their money? What could we do to get them to go away? And had we not had an amazing person in our community who gave us a ton of money, through the kindness of him and his family's heart, we would have been out earlier. I am so... I want to protect everybody's rights, but the person who brought this so far has failed in the court system. It's not like we're... These are close calls, and I can't predict what'll happen with the appeal, but we've got to put an end to this. If we do something up here next meeting that the community doesn't like, and they run an initiative, and it's this easy to just put a stop to it, that is highly concerning to me, and it disenfranchises all those thousands of people who signed the petition, not indicating whether they were gonna support the strategic growth initiative. They wanted a right to the say at the ballot. They wanted to put their mark down. Some people said, "I know I'll vote against it." Some people said, "I'll know I'll vote for it." And some people said, "I'm not sure. I've got to do my due diligence." So, this, to me, is a burning issue, because what it's doing is it's sending a message to the community that they don't have a right to the ballot, and I'm not comfortable with that in any way, shape, or form. You have a right to, if you want to recall me to get out there and petition and do that, you have a right to, if we've done legislation you don't agree with, if you can get enough of your citizens together to say you want it to go to the ballot, that's your right. And by holding this up for all of this time, it's also gonna cost us a special election. We've missed two coordinated elections. These things cost a lot of money. And to Counselor Bida's point, until you have the voters weighing in, you don't even really have an issue. You don't... So, I guess this whole thing confuses me. If it fails at the ballot box, you're done. You know? It's just kind of over, and it goes away. If it succeeds, that doesn't preclude someone from bringing a challenge if they believe they have a legal basis for the challenge. So, something doesn't feel right to me, and I'm gonna come down always on the side of the citizens to have a right to petition their government.
Counselor Gutwin?
Well, well said. I think that, for me... Sorry. It's a little distracting. I'm sorry. Just because I'm tired. I think that... I want to be really clear that what I am asking for is, I would like to go through a process where we have an expert in this field, and I know, Counselor Bida, that you are an attorney, and I really appreciate the work that the two of you put into this. I just would like this to be drafted and to get information from an expert in this. And so, I don't want to be making this decision, you know? Even just in the last example, we saw how difficult it is to ensure, you know? We had the 3.1 in the campaign finance, and if the wording isn't exactly right, there were significant unintended consequences to the point where we decided to pull that phrase. So, this is just something that, in my mind, is really important, that we should have this conversation. I do want to move forward with this conversation. I just want to do it in a way where we have all of the information and where we are making... Just... I just want to do it in the right way, which, for me, is not a yes or no right now at 12:20 in the morning. I would just like to have this drafted... Yeah. I'd like to have this drafted by... Can we have a study session? Can I propose that? To Counselor Abel? Could we have a study session to hash out some of this and go through it in more detail? I do want to move forward. I'm just not prepared to vote on this, and I'd like to have it reviewed, and I'd like to explore the other parts of the... And see if there are other issues.
Do I have the floor, Mayor? Thank you. In the first place, we've never gone through this in the past. No one has ever pointed a doubt to... Oh. This kind of protest has never happened in the past, and it is not a 50-year-old ordinance either. And I move that we repeal and reenact Lakewood Municipal Code Sections 2.52.10, 2.52.160, and 2.52.110B, and add language as written, ensuring the revised ordinance applies to all pending and future initiative and referenda as Section 2.52.240 applicability states. So, there's your motion.
I second it.
Point of information?
I don't accept the motion. It's an illegal motion, so...
I'm sorry?
It's an illegal motion.
How is it an illegal motion? Mr. Cox, is that an illegal motion?
I'm not gonna accept the motion, because that is not what is before us tonight.
Is that an illegal motion, Mr. Cox?
It's just to move things forward. It's not a motion. It's a consensus. It's a request for council action, how we've done every one, which you know how that works. So, you should know after all your years on council. Let's not lose this right now. It's 12:20. It's not a motion. It's a consensus to move this forward, and let's hear from our city attorney.
Well, what's proposed via the motion is an ordinance change, which has not been noticed for action by the council. This was to be a discussion item and a consensus to move that item forward. That may be the result of what you undertake, but it's not noticed as an action item to actually make ordinance changes tonight.
I would amend the motion, then, to move this forward for our first reading at a date certain, and then would be posted for... So, what's the first time we could do it as a first date for first reading?
And again, I'm not accepting any motion.
May I complete this question?
I'm interjecting as the chair. I'm not entertaining any motions.
You're interjecting as the person who recruited these two guys to help you defeat...
Sir, you're out of line.
I don't care what you think.
Okay. We're gonna take a recess at 12:21 PM. We'll come back at 12:30 AM.
Jackass? You called me a jackass, Mr. Mayor? You called me a jackass, Mr. Mayor?
We convene the Lakewood City Council meeting at 12:30 AM on January 15th. And we have Mr. Laber.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, maybe Counselor Skilling can help me with this, but it was our understanding that you need to have a first reading before a second reading. And that'd be important to move forward and set that up. But it'd also be good to potentially have some sort of legal advisory opinion on this or maybe even an exec session before the meeting, just so we can get a sense of what sort of ramifications moving forward with this would have. I don't know if Skilling, you want to add to that?
Counselor Skilling?
Well, I'd only add my light up and I think we were saying the same thing when there was talk that if anyone was trying to adopt like tonight, it was just, let's just put it first and second reading like a normal thing and just be done with it. Maybe that's too simplified, but I think just first, second reading, post it, people can weigh in. I think part of the problem is that whoever, whether it was Counselor Abel or Counselor Bita, when they put in the request for action, they put the giant red line with all the language, it looks like this big tough thing. And I really don't think it's that, and I don't want to minimize that, but it's not, I don't think it's that. It's really just changing the onus, is the burden on the petitioner or is the burden on the citizens? It's just kind of changing that dynamic, which I think is more common in that flip dynamic than we have now.
Counselor Gutwin?
Okay. All right. So then the consensus would be to move this to a first reading and a second reading. So is there consensus on that? Okay? So, there you go, Ms. Hodson. Counselor Gutwin?
I just want to make it really clear that I do support moving forward with this conversation, even though what I wanted was to have more education around it. But I do think that this is important, that we have this discussion as a community. So, thank you.
I echo that. Certainly support it 100% and certainly support our residents' rights to the ballot and got to support our residents' rights to protest. I will most likely be asking for an executive session, though, to get a better understanding of this. Counselor Laber?
Yeah, I was just going to add to what you both just said. I think it's important to emphasize that we should have some sort of legal advisory opinion on the ramifications because this is effectively a stay on a proceeding that we could change the dynamic of. So I think it's, you know, be important to know what kind of implications that'll have.
Okay. Do you need anything else from us? All right, cool. Thank you. All right, anything else on their general business? Yes, sir.
Apropos of talk of executive session, I was going to propose that we have an executive session hopefully prior to our next meeting on the 28th, if we could do it prior to. We've got some litigation issues. We need a debrief on where the appeal is on the thing we've been talking about. That would probably be helpful. All litigation matters. We've heard about Big Sky, all of these other things. I think we need an executive session on those issues to see where we're at and I think that'd be appropriate. If we can do that on the 28th, if we could just do an early, like today we did the Lakewood Speaks, which was, by the way, very helpful. I think that's going to actually be helpful moving forward. But if we did an executive session on the 28th, say 5:00 or 5:30, and then just go into regular- Okay. Well, what's that? I didn't either. I'm just going to propose that and then we all can talk about it.
I guess there's a, well, one, Mr. Cox, can you be prepared for that catch-all?
Well, if I want to understand correctly, is it specific to the status of litigation, meaningful litigation? Is it particular items that you want to talk about, get an update on? You know, there's litigation of some substance, there's some stuff that is less work-intensive and things you've never heard of because they're off our screen.
Sure. And I could see there being a very short period of just an update on the ongoing litigation we've had from the past executive sessions. I think we had like the Morrison dispute, maybe that probably just takes a few minutes. We've now had this protest, or the notice of appeal has been filed in this case and we probably need to understand what that means going forward. And we've heard on the Big Sky stuff, I know that there's been letters and all sorts of stuff going on. We had a water board do their thing and we need to understand what all of that means. And I know that we've got a lot of holidays and missed meetings and all of that. I don't anticipate it being much more extensive than that. I'm certainly not saying all litigation in the city, those would be the big topics, but I think are actually on the front of everyone's minds anyway. These are topics we talk about every single meeting. So I think it'd be appropriate to have an executive session with you.
Counselor Vincent?
Looking, looking at the schedule. Either we can, you're right, we have a head start meeting at 5:30. The other option would be to move it in front of, at 5:30, in advance of the study session on February 4th. It doesn't look like we have any meetings that that conflicts with. It pushes you back a week. So we could do that at 5:30, the study session is the bike and scooter rental, the waste haulers, et cetera.
Yeah. I'm getting consensus that February 4th is fine.
And Mr. Mayor, well, just gauging the reaction of Counselor Skilling to the timing of it, if there's anything that you think you need to hear about before that date, you know, if there's one matter in particular that you want information on, of course, we can gather that and provide a memo or whatever. Otherwise, now that it's a week later than anticipated, if that's all right, we'll do the same presentation on the 4th. But just wanted counsel to know that if there's something that seems to be time-stated, you want to talk about this appeal in this case before the 4th of February, we can do that. Just different setting.
Okay, all right. Anything else? All right, Counsel reports, Counsel Johnson? Counsel Vincent?
Um, yes. In light of all the sustainability, Morris Park has invited in a well-known national person, whose name I can't find here right now, at 9:40 Kipling, at 6:30 on February 7th. And it's how cities and individuals can go from traditional lawn care into organic and sustainable lawn care. And I guess you usually have to pay $75 or $100 to see this gentleman, but they're bringing him in. So I will get that information out if council's interested in it, because they said they'd open it up to everybody.
Counselor Bita?
Thank you. Just one quick item. I've spoken to a number of people in my ward, my constituents, and they're all very pleased, very proud of their Councilman Roybal and his service as mayor pro temp the past year. So I just want to thank him for that.
Counselor Franks? Counsel Roybal?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to do a little shout-out to our police department. When it snowed this last weekend, there was an emergency call and the fire department was called and gentleman was taken to the hospital, but it was snowing and the missus was terrified because she came up and she says, "I can't shovel my snow, I don't know what to do." And I'm going to reach out to the police department and say thank you, because they came out and they shoveled her sidewalk. When they responded, they just picked up a shovel and started shoveling her sidewalk. And I wanted to reach out to these two police agents which choose, which, with, this is already midnight, which choose not to be identified, but I wanted to reach out and thank them. And I think they know who they are and say thank you very much.
Counselor Laber?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say thanks, even though I suspect none of them will watch this, but thanks to all the people who came out to talk to us and public comment, particularly about sustainability. You know, I'm excited to work on that this year. It's 2019, it's time to go green. And, yeah, so I just appreciate that. To put this in terms Charlie can understand, since he's from Texas, don't hold that against him during this election, but it sounds like they want us to be, you know, what's the term? A little less hat and a little more cattle. So, anyway, looking forward to that challenge this year. Thanks.
Well said. Counselor Abel?
Late last week, I got a call from a constituent whose 30-year-old horse was down in the snow and the mud. She couldn't get the mare up, her son was on the way, but she was in distress. So I headed over there and when I got there, there were two fire engines. Lakewood Animal Control, two units. Jefferson County Animal Control was there. These folks worked for over an hour in the cold and snow trying to get this mare back up on her feet. And when she did, it was elation from the whole bunch. They worked so hard for so long and they saved that animal. And I just, you can't say enough about folks who serve us not only to protect our own public safety, but to protect the animals that we keep. So I want to thank them all.
Counsel Harrison? Counselor Skilling? Counsel Gutwin?
I also just wanted to briefly thank everyone who came out and especially the kids who came and gave public comment. Those moments really remind me why this is all worth it and also want to share that I'm, you know, it's certainly a priority, as you all know, of mine and look forward to making progress this year. And when they were up here, I just kept thinking to myself, I hope one of them someday runs for city council. So thank you to the kids who will never see this for coming.
Yeah. Lot of incredible youth in our community. So council had a work session earlier. You may have heard that mentioned and that's because city council will be now taking on the Lakewood Speaks platform. So this will open public hearings in a digital way to open access to a lot more people rather than having to come on a Monday night to give testimony. They'll be able to utilize Lakewood Speaks. So stay tuned, we're going to see that the second week of February is when we'll start to utilize that. And if you have any questions, let me know. If you interact or know folks that interact, or your church, or at a rec center, the point in time survey is coming up and that's the one time out of the year where our homeless folks are counted to try to give an opportunity to know what we have or where we have. It's going to be January 28th and 29th. There's a few different locations where they're going to do different things. One is at the Whitlock Center, one is at Bethlehem Lutheran, then they're doing something at the Bellmore Library and in Arvada. So this is really important. I'd encourage you. Congratulate our mayor pro temp and thank our previous. I will say one thing, after having been in this process for one year now without a council president, I really think the body is being underserved. I think there is great value in a council president. I also think that helps with work interaction and workloads with staff. So, you know, I think that we should continue to look at it, but I really think that we are missing out by not having that. And I can tell you, it's certainly made things a little bit more challenging for me. And if you want to have that conversation offline, I'm happy to. And, you know, this was a tough night for council and a tough night for our community and sometimes that's what happens. But at the end of the day, everybody does care, or I should say, you think, most people do care about our community and really care about the things that we're trying to drill into. So I've never had to use my gavel and tonight was the first night and I hope that I don't have to use that again. But we do have to keep some sort of order and whether you're a resident who knows our process for public comment, I have to keep some sort of quorum and also try to keep some sort amongst us. And if some felt that went too far tonight, I will take that feedback, but we have to be able to keep moving forward. We've asked staff to have our stuff 10 days in advance and we're still getting out after midnight. It's not doing anybody any service. We're here, we should be prepared. I don't quite know why we still continue to go five, six, seven hours, but we got to figure out a better way forward for our community. We still have some folks who are here hanging out. Maybe they want to go and have some Denny's later on tonight or something, because that's about all that's open. So I'd leave you with that, but we have to find a better way to move this thing forward. So, Ms. Greer, anything?
There is not a study session Monday night because City Hall is closed in recognition of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So I won't be here till 12:45 in the morning.
Good. Welcome back, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Cox? Ms. Hodson? Okay, so we'll adjourn, thank you to our police agent, we actually had multiple agents tonight, so thank you.